Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for joining us this evening. Everyone is present. And we have received no notices or letters for open forums, so I'll move on to approval of the agenda. Let me win approval.
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Michael. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. On our consent agenda this evening, these are items that are acted in one motion. They are routine in nature, and there is no separate discussion. We have the financials, the check wire transfer, our check wire disbursement summary, the wire transfer EFT ACH banking activity. The bank reconciliation statements will be available next. I'm not sure if that's true. Excuse me. Is it still next month?
Yes.
Okay. The monthly wire detail, the monthly health dental wire detail, monthly check detail, the monthly ACH detail, approval of school board minutes on a study session July 13th, regular board meeting July 13th, and a special board meeting on July 31st. Personnel items, the candidates for employment that are listed, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed, leaves of absences as listed, the Normandale contract for the 2021 year, and the Hennepin Tech contract for the 2021 year. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
By Jonathan, second.
Second.
Enrique? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Next is a resolution of acceptance of gifts. We have one gift tonight from Games by James and the McKee family for Summer Kids Company. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution to accept the resolution for the resolution of acceptance of gifts? Sorry.
So made.
By Stacy? Second. By Michael? This is roll call. Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Next on our agenda is Laker Pride and Special Recognition. Now, turn that to Dr. Stallow.
Thank you very much. Good evening. We have a little change of how we normally do Laker Pride. We usually invite someone that we want to recognize. However, tonight, David Brown asked me if he could have the floor for a recognition that he would like to present. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow, members of the board. My name is David Brown. I am the Director of Bridges ALC, and on behalf of myself and the Department of Defense, employer's support of the Guard and Reserve Program, it is my honor to recognize Dr. Terry Stallow, Mr. Jeff Holmberg, and Dr. John Bezek as patriotic employers providing absolutely remarkable support, both to me and my family during my deployment to Kuwait in support of Operation Spartan Shield in 2018, and this past summer's historic full mobilization of the Minnesota National Guard. Dr. Stallow's theme last year was "Relationships Matter," and it could not have been more profound as we were thrust into a pandemic and emergency remote learning and a time of crisis. The relationships that these three create have really been a foundation for our district as we've navigated these times. And it's the idea that relationships matter that really helped sustain me during my time I've been away from my PLS AS family. I have served with soldiers who have not had the kind of support that I've had. I worked with them directly, and it was absolutely heartbreaking to see the kind of turmoil, that lack of support of their employee and their well-being had on them during times of service. And that made what Dr. Stallow, Mr. Holmberg, and Dr. Bezek, their support, all that more appreciative. I so appreciate being in a district that demonstrates these things that are important to them to demonstrate it, not just state it or make it a banner. They live it, and I've experienced that. I would also like to acknowledge the great work of Ms. Heather Fitzloff, Administrator at Prior Lake High School, who seamlessly stepped into me, into my role as the ALC Director, and led a great year that saw Bridges transition out of a building that was open in 2009 and into a beautifully new constructed ALC. Unfortunately, the ESGR program does not have a formal recognition like I'll be offering these three tonight. I remember getting the call that I would be mobilized and serving in Kuwait for the year, and I immediately spoke to John, and his level of reassurance was profound. And then also, as I had conversations with Terry and Jeff, that kind of support is, you just can't, you can't measure it when you are going to serve, you're going to serve in a foreign land in hazardous duty, and you know that they're supporting you and your family during that time. This summer, when I got the call, I actually, my mother called me in the morning and said, "Dave, the governor said something about a full mobilization." And of course, me, being a typical son, "Mom, you're wrong. That's absolutely not possible. There's no way that that's happened." Well, of course, the first time since World War II, the Minnesota National Guard was fully mobilized. Once again, I called John. I said, "John, I never thought I would be calling you twice in such a short time with news like this." And his reassurance and problem solving, and we got this attitude. While I was planning for summer school to have kids back in the building at Bridges, I think maybe the first school to have students back in the state of Minnesota, actually, his support was instrumental. And of course, I called Terry. A few minutes later, on a Saturday, she picked up within 30 seconds. I called Jeff, spoke to Kevin as well. And when you are serving, the notion of having your mind on a mission and what your country is calling you to do, or your state, and not having to fret about these things, it's very hard to describe the importance of that. So, thank you, Dr. Stallow, Mr. Holmberg, and Dr. Bezek, for your understanding and demonstrating the importance of relationships in our profession and your patriotic support of those of us that serve. The program, ESGR, does have a plaque commemorating your service, so I'd like to present this plaque to you three now. These three are often presenting awards to others, to other people, so I'm really happy to be able to honor the good work that they do. So come on up, or I don't know if there's a different protocol, but I'd like to give you your plaque, and I just thank you for your support. Normally, I shake their hand.
I want to hug you.
Elbows.
You should come in front of the camera. You should go in front of the camera.
Cool.
Your eyes, that's good. Thank you.
It's hard to photobomb with math.
Thank you, Dave. We'll move on now to personnel. Jim Querem, Educational Support Staffing?
Good evening, again. There is one additional staffing request that I'm bringing forward to you for Educational Support Staff. The following staffing is recommended for the 2020-21 season. Season. School year.
You're wishing for sports.
Kind of feels like it, doesn't it? That's wishful. This is for a health aide, LPN. And the reason for this is because with the moving around of all the elementaries, we're left with Edgewood with no health aide, so we need to add one there for early childhood. So that's the reason for it. It's been ran past Julie in the business office, and so we are recommending that this for approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Educational Support Staff request?
So made.
Sorry.
Mary?
Mary?
Second?
Second.
By Michael? Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 I heard Enrique's. That motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Jim. We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. We have a construction update.
Good evening, again. Chair Shimick, School Board, and Dr. Stallow. A really quick, brief update on construction. Twin Oaks, we're doing a lot of interior finishes. We punch-listed today the remainder of the project, and we have some ongoing site work. Grainwood, a lot of work going on there. Again, a lot of site work. We are starting finishes, and kitchen is starting to take shape. High school, we're making good progress. A lot of terrazzo and finishes going on right now. Kitchen is well underway. We had some partial furniture deliveries this week, and again, site work. Hamilton Ridge, lots of terrazzo and site work, finishes going on. And again, we started delivering furniture today along with staff, teachers that are moving to Hamilton Ridge. We do anticipate occupancy for all our buildings. It's a brief overview of construction. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have questions? You answered my last, my question with your last statement.
Well, you'll notice I didn't say guarantee. Learned laying on that parking lot, I think. I think we're going to be in great shape.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the Return to School Plan. As I stated earlier, we did have a chance to look at this plan beforehand and to meet with Dr. Stallow and Jeff Holmberg to ask our questions individually. And we had a study session just a little while ago and went over the plan again and had an opportunity to ask more questions and have a greater understanding. And during the work session, it was to be audiotaped live. The first part of the presentation was not, did not work. It may have been due to the storm last night. But the second part, when we started discussion and questions, was audio livestreamed, and I've been told that it was clear and easy to hear. So at least we got that part out, and the whole presentation or the whole work session was recorded, so anybody could listen to it in its entirety tomorrow. I believe it'll be on our website. Is that correct, Kristy? Okay, she's shaking, yes. Okay. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stallow.
Excellent, thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Shimick, and board members, viewing public, and administrators who are here this evening. We are prepared tonight to share with you our PLS AS Ready-to-Learn Plan as we have been preparing all summer for the start of this very year unlike any other. And before I start, I just want to thank our parents and our staff for their input along the way. We'll hear more about that through the presentation. I also want to thank board members for your support, for your questions, for your phone calls, for seeking information during this time. And mostly, right now, I want to thank our administrative team who have been relentless in ensuring that we had learning models and a plan designed that ensured safety of our students and staff as well as quality learning opportunities. They have worked all summer. We've talked a lot about the importance of our culture of collaboration and how to lead in the gray, and we've certainly been doing that. We take no pleasure in pandemic planning as educators, yet we have a plan in place, and we are certainly ready for our students and our staff, and we're ready to learn. The outcomes this evening, by the end of this night, we want to be sure that board members have a chance to continue to discuss our Ready-to-Learn Plan. And also, at the conclusion of this presentation, I will seek action on the resolution adopting our base learning model. And there's a couple other components of that, including some calendar changes, including an extension of Tier One employees in childcare, and also then our recommendation for the model in which we will use to start the year as a recommendation. You'll see that the presentation, we've made sure that we have components around the planning process and the timeline that we've used. We want to start then with the health and safety and staffing considerations that we've used throughout the planning process. We'll talk about the instructional learning models, student support services, and then we'll talk about transportation, child nutrition services, childcare, co-curriculars, and finances as we make our way to that resolution. The planning process for us started before school was out last year. We actually hosted focus groups, and we saw five themes emerge that really set the stage for our plan in late May and early June. And those themes were about adult learning and professional development. It was about teaching and learning, social-emotional learning, safety and health, and the logistics of operations within the district. So as we focused on those five themes, we also worked in department teams and program teams to really look at what each scenario would look like. Should we be in a hybrid and in-person or a distance learning model? At the same time, thinking about the expectation that regardless of those three learning models, there would also be an expectation that we had just a distance learning model. So we worked on those more siloed plans and then really began working on the integration of those as each department worked to see the interconnectedness of all of them. Teams shared plans with one another as we looked at the intersection of our work and continued to plan over the last couple of weeks as we continued to seek input from stakeholders to inform our work. You can see a little bit on this process and timeline, the input stages that we had. We actually had several of those throughout the summer. We developed those scenarios, asked for more engagement from our community to help us add detail and make some decisions around some of our modeling. We got guidance from MDE in July and then have used that guidance to continue to plan and to seek input. And that brings us to today where we will seek action on that resolution and pending board approval. We'll plan to communicate to staff and families tomorrow. At this point, I'll invite Chrislyn Goodman to share some of the stakeholder engagement data and processes.
Well, I am not Chrislyn Goodman.
But I bet you know a lot about this.
I can talk a little bit about the stakeholder engagement. When is here, she can take it away.
Hello, that's right, take two. So our stakeholder engagement was in two different prongs or two different branches, families and staff. I'll talk about families first. So as Dr. Stallow mentioned earlier, we had some focus groups at the end of May and in early June. And those focus groups allowed people to give feedback in a group where they got to converse with each other, excuse me, on the three different learning models. Sorry, breathing and the mask.
Well, on your behalf, we can't have everyone in the room, so you had to come from a different place in the building.
That's right. And I was listening in the other place. The slides just come up so quickly sometimes. So we were able to engage with about 50 families. So that includes students at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as parents and guardians. And the purpose of doing the focus groups, like one of the purposes, was to make sure that we got some, that we got a really diverse perspectives in so that we purposefully interviewed students and families from all different groups within our district. At the end of June, we had another survey that was about the learning model preferences of families and transportation. And we had 6,700 responses, so that was a really high response rate. In the middle of July, we also did some focus interviews on a smaller scale than back in June, and we were looking for specific information about how families wanted to receive communication, what worked best for them, like what the best modes of communication were. We conducted a survey at the end of July about the choices for the hybrid models. We had 2,400 responses, and we used that information to inform the rest of our hybrid model creation going forward. At the end of July, we opened up a Distance Learning Academy form that is still open and closes at the end of this week. And that's a form where families can opt into the Distance Learning Academy, which we'll be speaking about later. And they also gave us some information about transportation. All right, you can go. Oh, I can go to the next slide? The other branch of surveying that we did and stakeholder engagement was around staff. We included staff in the focus groups. There we go. We had about 150 staff participants. Again, we were trying to cast a really broad net. We had employees from all different aspects of our district. And that includes people who work in school buildings, people who work at the DSC in childhood, sorry, Child Nutrition Services. Every type of employee category was represented. We then had a survey for staff about fall planning, and that was a place where we were asking for staff concerns to help inform our staffing needs. In July, we also did some of those communication focus groups that I spoke about, that we also did parallel with families to find out about the best ways to communicate with people. At the end of July, we had a survey about the hybrid model with four, sorry, with 600 responses. At the end of July, we also did some narrative feedback. So we were getting feedback in many different ways, not just from a survey, but then also people being able to just talk. That information is collected by principals, and we also use that to help inform how our hybrid models were chosen in more detail. At the end of July, a survey was done with staff on their commitment to return to work. And then there is a last survey there, feedback on hybrid model details, and that was from built teams, so those building instructional leadership teams. All right.
Thank you very much, Chrislyn. The process and the stakeholder engagement helped inform our planning, as Chrislyn said, as we prepared for the announcement from the governor and MDE regarding how we would determine the learning model to start the year. And you can see on this slide, this is part of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan that really outlines the framework that districts are to use to ensure a localized, data-driven approach. As I said, we're prepared to share our plan tonight aligned to all of the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health and the process that we've used to bring this recommendation to you in terms of how we recommend to start the year. You could see here, just again on that outline, that on July 30th, we heard the framework was shared with us about the decision-making model from the governor and the five steps that were outlined in that previous slide. On August 3rd, I met with the Scott County Health officials as well as other Scott County superintendents, and we set up the routine that we will be using going forward in terms of meeting on a weekly basis to review the data. Additionally, on August 7th, I contacted MDE with an email that asked how I was to schedule my consultation with the Minnesota Department of Education. Because the recommendation that I'm bringing forward is aligned to the data, and it's not more restrictive than that, they told me that at this point, I did not need a formal consultation with the Minnesota Department of Health, but would be working with them in the future through their support services that they're going to have. Tonight, then, we're bringing forward our presentation of our base model plan with our recommendation, and again, pending board approval. We plan to communicate that to families tomorrow. At this point, we'll turn it over as we start talking about the health and safety to Maureen Mullin and to Joe Kapusciak. And as a reminder, Joe is serving. Part of his role as Assistant Principal, we've asked him to also serve as our district COVID coordinator. He's working closely with all of us, and will work closely with the county and the Minnesota Department of Health as we continue to move forward with our work this year.
Good evening, Chair Shimick, Dr. Stallow, members of the board. This is Maureen Mullin, Assistant Director of Operations. We have developed, we meaning Joe, I, in collaboration with great input from our district nursing staff as well as the operations team and other staff members, site admin, a health and safety plan for our district that is based on the, both the recommendations and the requirements from MDE, MDH, OSHA, CDC, and other organizations. So we have divided it into five different points: cleaning and disinfecting, indoor air quality, seating, circulation and signage, personal protective equipment, screening, reporting, and tracking. I'll be addressing the first four points, and Joe will be addressing the fifth point. So our cleaning and disinfecting plan is, we have developed an enhanced cleaning protocol and schedule for high-touch surfaces. So we've identified, we did a district-wide audit, identified high-touch surfaces in the district, put together a schedule that includes the site, the room, the type of space, whether it's a classroom, a gymnasium, a cafeteria, the frequency of the cleaning schedule in those spaces, the cleaner that's being used, and the party or parties responsible for cleaning. So that was reviewed today by the built teams and got a good thumbs up from that, and we'll be including that in our general health and safety plan. For indoor air quality, we are aligned with the CDC and OSHA response recommendations with our MERV ratings for our filtration. We have a preventive maintenance plan that is a documented, monthly preventive maintenance plan which includes regular changing of our filters as well as other maintenance. So it is a documented plan for our district that our inside maintenance team does a great job with. We are with seating, circulation, and signage. I'll take each of those separately. So seating, the Teaching and Learning Department developed a tool for determining the capacities based on two things. One factor was the state fire marshals COVID response, 50% guidelines. And the second was the MDH's six-foot diameter circle. We took those two numbers in this table and took the square footage of each space in the building and determined what the maximum capacity was for those spaces. So we did that district-wide for every site, so every space, so we know the maximum capacity that we're allowing in those spaces. For circulation, there are specific guidelines, both requirements and recommendations from MDE about circulation. So in entering and exiting, for traffic and pathways, we are going to be meeting, we meaning Joe and I, will be meeting with each site admin and the lead custodian at each site to develop a site-specific plan for circulation. Our buildings are very different. Where we enter, exit, how hallways will work will vary from each plan, but we have a set list of items to address, although what that looks like in each building will be a little bit different. Signage requirements are also very specific, both with recommendations and with requirements. We have developed some district-specific signage, and we'll continue with that to post the signage that is required by MDE and MDH in our buildings. For personal protective equipment, as we talked about earlier, we have purchased for our district face shields, disposable face masks, our district face shields, disposable face masks, and gloves for our staff and our students. We are also expecting to get, as every school district is, both masks and shields from the Department of Education, not knowing for sure when we would get those, wanting to make sure we were ready for start of school. We did purchase, and we do have enough on hand for our staff to get started. We will also be doing some other PPE for our special services that needs some other gowning and gloving and specific masks for those services. Screening, reporting, and tracking, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Maureen. Yes, screening, reporting, and tracking. I would say the most important thing when it comes to the screening is going to be the daily self-screening that each individual needs to do. So we have already asked our staff, and we will be asking families to conduct a daily self-screening at home. Parents will be hearing more about that in the coming days, but as I mentioned, staff have already gone through that process and are completing that screening before entering the building currently. The reporting and tracking piece is related around whether an individual, staff, or student was to develop symptoms, or more importantly, to become a lab-confirmed positive or a confirmed exposure. We have a process in place for staff and students. If they develop symptoms, we will start tracking that using a Infinite Campus system. If an individual becomes a lab-confirmed positive or confirmed exposure, we have a process where they will report that to the building principal. The building principal will fill out a form, which then notifies myself, so most importantly, I can contact the Department of Health, and we can begin that tracing process. The tracing process will be involving the idea that we will have seating charts for our students in the classrooms, buses, lunchroom, so that we can see who they have come into contact with, because again, that definition of confirmed exposure is within six feet for more than 15 minutes. Other individuals that are notified are human resources, so that they can work with staff on potential absence or leave options. Communications Department, operations, so we can clean the spaces that the individual has been in as well.
Questions for that needed? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim McCormick, Executive Director of Human Resources, for those at home. This is concerning staffing considerations around this plan. Some of the things that we've done up to this point is, we worked really hard on trying to get employee input, particularly from our largest bargaining units, on getting feedback and input related to everything from the forms we use, to the process that we have, to messaging that went out to them prior to that. We created staff return-to-work protocols that started in the summertime with childcare and preschool in the summer, and we've been adding to that, changing it, updating it as things go along. It's a fairly extensive document now related to that. Also required, all staff certification of the employee daily checklist, just like we talked about with students, the same thing with staff. Also, we have tried to keep all staff updated on the latest and greatest related to COVID and all supports, whether that's staff resources, like the Employee Assistance Program, to regular weekly HR emails on Fridays highlighting things, reminders to staff, who they talk to, what processes are, just really trying to educate them on everything that related to this whole process that can relieve some of the anxiety around this entire thing. We're working closely with building principals to adjust staffing based on student needs and enrollment changes, particularly related to distant learning, and that process is happening right now. We got staff input back on who may need a leave, who may need accommodations, and we're beginning to wade through that right now and actually reach out to each individual that answered no on that document. And then finally, the other thing is, I think this is definitely going to be a need, is subs. And so we've been working with teachers on call for, over the summer, and had several meetings, we have another one this week, related to how many teachers we think that regularly sub in Prior Lake are willing and able to come back, and then also tried to tailor some training around what specifically we might see under a hybrid model, or, excuse me, a distant learning model, something like that. So, that's it.
Another thing that the Department of Health and Department of Education shared with school districts are requirements that you need to have in place if students are going to be in the building. And so what you see on your screen right now is, what are the requirements for whether it is an in-person or a hybrid model? Many of those we've already touched base on, including masks, PPE, cleaning, building and district COVID coordinators, as well as the monitoring piece. However, if we decide to go the route of having students in a hybrid model, there are additional requirements that we need to do regarding our buildings, and so most importantly, we really have to make sure that we are following the 50% capacity of our facilities, 50% capacity of our transportation, making sure that we have the appropriate staffing, as Jim just described, and most importantly, keeping that social distancing of six feet as often as possible around our building.
The next part of the presentation, we'll be talking about the instructional learning models that the district has been working on. You've been hearing a lot of the health and safety components, information from the Department of Health, CDC, Department of Education, and as part of the governor's executive order, school districts have been working on three different instructional models over the last several months in order, with feedback of stakeholders looking at the guidance that's out there, recognizing that during the course of the school year, we may or will have to go in between those three different levels of either in-person, hybrid, or distance. So that has been our work, we're going to share that with you this evening. And then in a little bit, Dr. Kevin Shuttenger is going to talk about our new Distance Learning Academy, which is a different, another option for students this year, as families can consider. Regardless, there are consistent practices and materials for all of the models that we're presenting this evening. First and foremost, all of our models have PLSSAS teachers, Prior Lake Savagery School support, and our rigor. And basically, learning is facilitated by highly qualified, highly trained teachers. Through the stakeholder feedback, that was central. Having teachers work with our students in connections in meaningful ways academically, socially, and emotionally is important. It's important for our teaching staff, it's also important with our students and with our parents. Equitable access to technology, students will be issued a district-wide device and have access to all the district-provided online resources. K2 will be an iPad, Chromebooks from grades three through five, and grade six through 12 iPad. As you as a board have known, we've had several conversations about our technology. The carts at all of the different sites have been disassembled so that we can disseminate the devices to students in preparation for learning this year. And I've already alluded to it, embedded academic support for intervention and student support services, BED, EL, and GT, as well as embedded social-emotional learning at the elementary, middle school, and high school. Attendance and grading and communication will be very much consistent as well, with teachers taking attendance for synchronous class sessions and check-ins with students on asynchronous work. Grading, students will be graded in the same ways and use the same method as their peers. Communications, we're going to be using the same tools. Our learning management system, CSOW, the elementary, schoolage at secondary, and our student information system, Infinite Campus. The first model is in-person learning. I think it was, it's always been our hope that we would start the school year in in-person learning. It's a model we hope to be doing at some point, but it does not look likely that this is a model that's on the table right now. Again, as we look at these different models, in-person is where all students will attend school every day with additional safety precautions, including practicing social distancing where possible. Later in this presentation, Dr. Salo will be talking about the countywide data from the Department of Health and as far as that recommendation. But at some point this year, we all hope that the data will tell us that we can start moving back to an in-person experience for our kids. We're going to spend some time talking about hybrid learning and our hybrid learning. All students will learn through a combination of learning at home and in-person at school with strict social distancing and capacity limits. Specifically, in Prior Lake Savagery Schools, our hybrid learning model will look like an A/B flex, A/B. So students will receive, will be divided into two groups. It is probably the number one important thing, is that we are going to be keeping families together. So families will be assigned either an A-Day or a B-Day in order to minimize some of the challenges with scheduling, so students are going, their students and their families are going on consistent days. But what this means is, students will have two days of in-person class, as well as two days of in-home or at-home, hybrid home, and then a flex day. Flex day is, most students will be doing distance learning, but some students will have the opportunity to attend school in person for individual, small group instruction, intervention, enrichment, or specific classes. Each flex day, which will be on a Wednesday, will also be a two-hour early release to distance learning for all students. One of the challenges with the hybrid learning model is ensuring that our staff have consistent collaboration and planning time. Without having that release to distance learning, our staff would not have that. And given the necessity of our staff to be able to collaborate together, plan together, this is something that is extremely important. It also came, it came certainly from our staff. It's something we recognized this past spring, and it was also something from feedback that we received from families and stakeholders. A lot of the feedback indicated that teachers did a great job. One of the things that came through the feedback was improving some of the consistency between some of the experiences that students were having. This will allow us to be able, will allow teachers to be able to collaborate together in order to have more consistent learning experiences for students. In a hybrid model, we've also sketched out a draft calendar. So A students would go Monday, Thursday, B students would be Tuesday, Friday, with those flex days on those Wednesdays. A sample K5 schedule of what a school, what the students' day will look like for elementary, hybrid, in-person day. Again, morning meeting, you see the content area blocks, specialist time, lunch recess, outdoor learning, and I think that's something K12 or pre-K12, outdoor learning, to the extent possible, having outdoor time for students, learning outdoors. We're an East M school district. We have many of our teachers who bring students outside for learning experiences in the past, and we would, that would be the expectation moving forward. And that also aligns with the guidance we're receiving from the Department of Health as well. On a hybrid home day, students that are at home would, could participate in a morning meeting, which would be synchronous with the students that are in school. There would be teachers scheduled and available time for individual, small group instruction, individual practice and learning, and then preparing for the next in-person learning day. Flex day, I mentioned that a little bit, in-person, students will participate in small groups, instruction from specialist teachers, working with classroom teachers on targeted skills, and again, getting additional support that they may need in order to stay current or keep up with the content area, needing additional help. At the secondary level, middle school and high school operate within the six-period day schedule. Again, more connection points for students and teachers during the week, academic, social, and emotionally. Again, seeing their teachers in person twice a week, in addition to the hybrid home periods of time, there would be synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities, and then the flex instructional day. Again, staff and student connection and academic intervention, and then also staff and team collaboration and planning time. Here's a sample school schedule. Middle school and high school students in person will follow the six-period day. When they're at home, they will also follow their six-period day schedule. They will be able to connect with their, with their teachers during those hours from remotely to be able either to get either an anticipatory set, or going over the objectives or outcomes of the day, connecting with teachers, or other class-level peers that are in there during the in-person day, and of course, the flex day. On the distance learning model, students will learn at home and receive daily interaction with their licensed teachers. Distance learning will be used full-time if students and staff are not allowed to go, not allowed to be in buildings as directed under the Minnesota State Learning Plan. This year's program reflects improvement over last year's based on staff, parent, and student feedback. And so as we go through the course of the school year, schools are, the planning we're doing is anticipating we may go to one, two, or three of these different models during the course of the year. And in a distance learning, should the data indicate what the number of cases per 10,000 reaching that threshold? And as a district, if we were to choose to go distance learning, instead of A/B days, students would be at home, connecting online and virtually with their teachers daily. And then the fourth thing I spoke about, and I'm going to ask Dr. Shuttenger to come up, is to give an overview of our Distance Learning Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Holmberg. Good evening, everyone. I'm really pleased to share some more information about our Distance Learning Academy. This is a new option for parents and families this year, and it is distinct from the three options Mr. Holmberg described as part of that dial. So no matter what learning model we may be in according to the Safe Learning Plan, parents and families will have the option to opt into the Distance Learning Academy whether their student is in any grade from K to 12. Some of the key consistent parts of the Distance Learning Academy that are consistent to the other learning models is that, again, we have PLSSAS teachers who will receive focused professional learning and development on online teaching and distance learning best practices. That'll be in addition to the professional learning that all of our teachers receive in order to bring these models to life. Our students will have equitable access to technology, depending on the grade level, but a district, the district device, and they will have specialized and additional resources and support for them. At elementary, that support will come primarily through a Distance Learning Academy teacher. At secondary, they will have a Distance Learning coach to help check in with them, make sure that they're making good progress in their classes. As Jeff mentioned, several aspects are consistent with our other models, and this really, right now, we're asking parents to opt in for the first quarter. And the consistency between the Distance Learning Academy model and the other three models that, as Mr. Holmberg mentioned, we may be in at some point in the school year is really key to enable a smooth, as smooth a transition as possible for parents and families transitioning between these models. So attendance will be very similar to in-person or hybrid learning, in that students are expected to attend the synchronous meetings and check in with asynchronous activities as needed. Grading will mimic our hybrid and in-person practices and use a lot of the same assessments and practices that our other teachers will be doing. And communication will use the same and familiar tools that we have, including CSOW, School Age, and Infinite Campus. Students in the Distance Learning Academy, no matter what grade they are in, will have access to live synchronous instruction at, for every single day. So this is an example elementary, or a schedule on the left, and in elementary, a student would be assigned to a specific Distance Learning Academy teacher. Depending on the numbers, it could be a teacher that is specific to that grade level. And for example, they might start with, just like it would in-person, a morning meeting to build community, to build classroom culture, and to build connections between teachers and students. There might be some live instruction in math or reading, followed up by some more asynchronous practice activities. The second morning block might have small group sessions focused on individual skill development for students. There's always lunch. In the afternoon, there may be some prerecorded video sessions accompanied by some other small group sessions. And then in the fourth block, there might be some independent learning. This schedule is pretty flexible, but one of the guaranteed and consistent aspects is that there will be live synchronous instruction each day. In secondary, the Distance Learning Academy students will be assigned to their teachers that they've already preregistered for. So one of the benefits of this approach is that we are not disrupting students' schedules. They will still have access to some of the electives that they registered for and that they really enjoy. And in high school, we're not causing a lot of disruption to students' progress towards graduation, and some of those graduation requirements that they're enrolled in. So in secondary, students will follow that six-period day schedule mimicking really the hybrid or in-person schedule. So a student might have math first period, and at some point during that period, for at least 10 minutes, there will be live synchronous instruction, and that could be direct instruction from the teacher, introducing a new topic, or it could be something more like individualized support, answering questions, reviewing homework, things like that. On the Wednesday, the students will have access to small group support on those flex days. They'll also have an opportunity then to check in more intentionally and deeply with that Distance Learning coach. Students will have access to EL, GT, Gifted and Talented, and Special Education Services, just as they would in in-person or hybrid scenarios. They will also have access to all their elective classes in as authentic a manner as can be accomplished in a distance learning format. Thank you.
Good evening once again, Chair Schimmick, School Board members, Dr. Salo. So we're going to take a moment to go over our early learning program models for the school year. We have the very positive opportunity of doubling the amount of physical space in which we can program this year for our early learners. So that allows us to operate at the hybrid level of health and safety throughout, whether we are in full in-person or a hybrid learning model. Specifically, that means that the student's schedule will not change as we cycle between those two models of learning. We also have some very specific points of entry and exit for the multiple types of programming that we offer within our building, because we do have some parent programming as well, parent participation. Should we move into a distance Should we move into a distance learning model? There are three areas in particular that we will focus on because in our part-time programming, it is well acknowledged from MDE that we can't necessarily assess all seven domains. So we're going to look at language and literacy, mathematics, and social emotional. Social emotional is a big one for us, for both students and families within our programs. And I also just want to point out that we are well-equipped for extended outdoor learning. Our teachers love to get outdoors. We spend an extended amount of time outdoors already, so a lot of the actions that we need to take for increased health and safety are things that we really do in early learning programs already. This is just at a higher level. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to give you a quick overview of student support services as we move forward in a hybrid or a distance learning model. In student support services, which would include EL services, special ed services, 504, we will continue to provide a continuum of services based on student need, just as we do now. So we will have some students who will receive their services in more of a push-in. During those days, we're in session, in school, in person. We will have students who may receive in-person and then extend their time and come in perhaps on Wednesday to receive additional services in addition to that distance learning piece. So our goal is to try to get as much face-to-face time with our students as possible, who we know are struggling. And the other piece we're looking at is providing, really to help us make those decisions, we're looking at student IEPs, how much service time they have right now, AEP goals and objectives, related services. And we've created a matrix that will help us to make some of those decisions that are data-based as well as we move forward. General ed teachers will continue to provide accommodations and modifications for all of our students, special education, EL, and 504 students.
Thanks, Deb. We're going to transition now to some of the other departments, and we'll start with Jim Delo with transportation.
Good evening. Again, Dr. Salo, Chair Shimick, and School Board. Brief outline on transportation. We have bus routes determined. We are working on a plan for student verification to make sure that our half-capacity we can maintain. Transition, transportation will be consistently provided each day for students for in-person, hybrid, and hybrid learning models. We are working on student assignment timelines with site admin now. Our bus capacity is capped at 37 for a typical school bus. School, school bus company, the bus company has planned for cleaning buses in between routes. And also, we anticipate a high level of interest in families driving their children to school, so there will be some challenges with congestion. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Salo, Chair Shimick, and the rest of the board. I'll give you a brief overview of child nutrition services. When students are in school, whether it's in-person or the 50% hybrid, students will come down to the cafeteria and will be eating in the cafeteria. Cafeteria capacity will be at 50%. While they are on their way down and when they're waiting in lines, there will be markers on the floor to show them how to stay socially distanced and safe. All the high-touch points, such as pin pads, will be either eliminated or sanitized after every student. There will be no more self-service of foods. Foods will be generally grab-and-go, or the child nutrition staff will be putting the food directly onto the tray. And this will also include napkins and silverware and condiments. A la carte, or seconds, or students that only want a milk can come and sit down. After students go through the line the first time, they will sit down in their assigned seat and not get back up. The child nutrition staff will come through for seconds or a la carte and if they drop a spoon. Students who will be either distance learning or at-home hybrid will be offered meals to pick up on the flex learning day, which is Wednesday. They'll be able to pick up the meals at the schools. And then in addition, child nutrition employees will receive additional training on food safety practices specific to COVID and the prevention of spreading the disease. Thank you.
Emily, would you mind advancing that slide?
I will do that.
Thank you. I'm going to share the childcare plan on behalf of Kelly Vossen. Childcare will be available at all elementary schools with priority registration going to the tier-one essential workers at no cost during the school day. Fees will be charged for before and after-school care. As part of the tier-one, our instructional staff members are part of that tier-one. Our recommendation in our base learning plan is also that we extend that to children of all of our employees who attend school in our district. Registration for those families who are not in tier-one will be fee-based and available during, before, and after-school on a, as long as space is available in order to meet all of the health and safety guidelines that we have. Additionally, care will be provided by Kids Company, available from 7:00 AM to 5:30 in all three of the models. Our hope is that we can help support our families. And in addition to childcare on those days, we'll also want to be sure that we have instructional support for the students who would be, normally it would be a home hybrid day if we were in a hybrid model or a distance learning.
Good evening. A quick co-curriculars update. The Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors voted last Tuesday to move forward with boys and girls soccer, girls tennis, girls swim and dive, and boys and girls cross-country. With that, there were several restrictions, modifications, limitations in terms of roster sizes, crowd sizes, transportation use. And so we'll be following all those MDH and Minnesota State High School League guidelines. The slide that you see just talks a little bit to the reduction in the number of weeks in each one of those seasons that was approved and a reduction in the total number of games allowed. So our students will be traveling less and they'll be competing less in those fall sports that were approved. Football and volleyball were moved to what's called the skinny season between the traditional winter and spring seasons. District administration met earlier today and will continue meeting to discuss the status of other activities, clubs, and non-Minnesota State High School League activities.
The only thing that I would add, as Russ was talking, one of the challenges we met today about facility use, and one of the challenges that we know that we have moving forward is ensuring that our buildings are clean and sanitized and ready for students the next day. So one of the things that we are looking at as we determine how we ensure that our students are involved and have opportunities to be involved in their activities is we will have to limit the other user groups, some of our outside user groups. We may have to limit especially the inside and the gym rentals and some of those kinds of things. We'll try to get communication out to those partners. Our hope is that we can do this on a limited basis, maybe for the first quarter of the year, just so that we can get our routines in place and ensure that we've got enough time to ensure that our, our buildings are safe and, and ready for learners the next day. Thanks, Julie. Sorry about that.
Good evening. You've seen this slide before. This is just a update or a reminder of the additional funding that we're receiving this year due to the GEAR, the government, governor's emergency education relief, and the federal elementary and secondary schools relief and the grants. About, just a little over $432,000. We do, are required to reserve somewhere between $13,000 and $15,000, depending on the enrollment in our parochial schools. And then we can use it for a variety of items, technology, cleaning supplies, mental health, just to maintain our ongoing educational services. So we are utilizing those, as you heard Maureen talking about some of the items we've already been purchasing. So we are utilizing those funds for that purpose. And we continue to monitor and determine what are the best needs for these expenditures.
Julie, would you mind advancing that? Thank you very much. Just a review then on the presentation overview. Again, we talked a bit about the timeline, the health and safety considerations. You heard about the instructional models as well as student service support. And then certainly details, some details about transportation, child nutrition services, childcare co-curriculars, and finance. As we look to, Jeff, would you mind advancing that? Thank you. As we look to the model and the decision-making aligned to what MDE has laid out for us, I want you to know that each Friday morning, I will be meeting, and Joe will be joining me on the meetings with Scott County Health and Superintendents in Scott County to review the most current data. We'll get that data on Friday mornings, and that will be from the Tuesday prior and then that 14-day prior to that. So we'll be reviewing that every Friday morning. Right after that meeting, I'll call, convene the meeting with our incident command response team. We'll review the data. Will Joe and I will be able to give a briefing on the county data? And then in return, we'll ask from our leaders for a briefing on other data points and factors that we should be considering as we make decisions. We'll need HR to fill us in on where we are with, with staff absences or things like that. In the same way, we'll need to know about student absences, if there's anything particular to a building that we need to be paying attention to. We'll be able to review all of that and then determine at that point if there's a need based on the data for us to move into a different model or not. Just a little bit on that transition from one model to another. If we were to transition to a less restrictive model, so if we went from distance learning to hybrid, that can occur no sooner than every two weeks. So that has to allow time for us to be in that distance learning model and then to transition, to be there at least two weeks before we would transition into hybrid. If we go the other direction and have a more restrictive model, we don't have that kind of criteria. We can, we are able to move into that more quickly. And that would be our goal, especially if the data was, was trending high and we wanted to make that change from a hybrid model, say, to distance learning, we'd be able to do that more quickly. Again, based on the current Scott County data, our recommendation at this point is that we start the year for both our elementary and our secondary students in a hybrid model. I want you to know that we will continue to monitor that data and to, if the, if the cases continue to climb, we can determine a model change if necessary as the data warrants it. The next slide is just a reminder of those thresholds and numbers of cases per 10,000 over the 14 days that the county supplies to us. So the data that I received this past Friday was from July 22nd to August 4th. And where Scott County, the data Scott County provided us, we were at a 23.7. And you see that, that falls into that hybrid learning for all. A little different than the dial that we've talked about. This model does have five different points. So there are, there are cases, and there could be incidents, where our elementary students were in a different model than our high school students. Again, based on the most recent data, our recommendation would be, starting with that hybrid model. And you can see that on the next slide, again, that recommendation. As you're considering this recommendation and as we come toward the end of this presentation and, and seek action on a resolution, I just want to remind you that the other components as part of our base learning plan are those calendar changes that we talked about, having an early release schedule on those Wednesdays where students would be released into distance learning. Also, our plan to extend that tier-one childcare options to all of our staff, not just our instructional staff. And then really looking at the plans that you heard this evening about those two options for families, the one option of the distance learning academy. And that other option then of going with the flow of the district as we look at the data and we move the dial back and forth. Again, the governor put together a comprehensive guidelines on opening schools that were based on data and science. And these are the data points and the guidelines that we've used to make this recommendation to you. So just want you to know that as we move forward, that's how we'll continue to come to you is through those data points. And then lastly, just looking at a couple of next steps pending board approval. If the board was to take action and approve this this evening, we'd want to communicate with staff and families in our community tomorrow. More details about the plan, because we know that's something that our families and our staff are looking to as well as the recommendation to start the year. We'll also continue our planning. You know, Jeff spoke about that earlier. We've got almost a month left before school starts, and we certainly have the details of plans that we need to complete, and we need more staff around us in order to do that. They will be the ones who will be implementing with the leaders, especially at the building level. And we'll be working with, with staff and families as we, we implement those. And then lastly, I think it's just really important that we all remain flexible and responsive to the uncertainty, to watching and monitoring the data, to be diligent in the work that we're doing around health and safety as we continue our work in pandemic planning. So with that, Board members, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. And then I would be seeking action on that resolution.
We've asked a lot of questions tonight. Are there any other questions before we have discussion and vote? Stacy?
Sure, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The model or the guidelines coming from MDE, MDH, the range. I seem to remember in our conversations over the last week, I thought you had said something like if you were to recommend something that wasn't within that range, that you had to go talk to somebody or something. What is that process?
When I, when I contacted, because remember the, the slide with the five steps? One of those steps was to contact the Minnesota Department of Health. And the way that we were as superintendents to do that was to send an email to the, we have our own email to MDE. So I emailed them and I said, I'd like to set up my consultation with the Minnesota Department of Health. And they said that as long as I wasn't doing something that was more restricted, less restrictive. Sorry about that. Less restrictive than what the data would show, that I did not need a formal consultation with the Minnesota Department of Health at this time, that I could work, continue to work with the county. So if-
That's just to check in case you're deciding to be-
Yep, yep. But then if I was going to move into or recommend that, then-
So in the future, I'm saying like within the year or something, yeah. You would have to go through that step then.
Yeah. And we, I feel we have a really strong process in place with Scott County Health right now. And it sounds like the Minnesota Department of Health, they are working on, working with, they're calling them regional support teams. And our, our onboarding meeting for that, I believe, is not until August 24th. But we will be assigned, or each region in Minnesota will be assigned, I think, two staff members from the Minnesota Department of Health as well as a testing expert. And that would be then, you know, the conduit that Joe and I and other leaders would have, should we have additional questions? Or should we need a consultation because we were going to recommend based on some specific data or some staffing issues, going to a less restrictive model?
Michael?
These are two questions that I have come up with conversations with both families and teachers that I forgot to ask last time. The first is, is there a way to just touch on concerns about passing time in the middle in high schools? And I, I asked this in our one-on-one sessions, but as I understand it, we're going to kind of stagger and create some direction to try and minimize that close contact. Is that correct?
Joe talked a little bit earlier about the signage, and I think the, the most important part of exactly what you asked is, you know, today, and again, our, our building instructional leadership teams, we had the retreat planned for today. So most of that retreat was about the school improvement plan process. But, you know, we certainly did, principals certainly did talk about planning for the start, knowing that the board would be reviewing this information tonight. So some of those details, you know, certainly we've worked out with principals and with staff. But yeah, we could definitely be staggering, you know, have classes run a minute or two on either side of things and really looking at the signage to make sure that we're, we're passing on as much separation as we possibly can.
And then the other question that you, is something that may be dealt with between now and then in terms of details. And that is just at the elementary level, is there a different plan for specialists working with students this time to minimize their exposure or how we're trading spaces?
So yes, from a specialist standpoint, I've I'm missing the term in my mind right now, but they're looking at a schedule where students may have all their FIAED for a period of weeks, then- but they're looking at a schedule where students may have all their FIAID for a period of weeks, then music and then art. So it wouldn't be a rotation every single, every other, you know, four days or five days. But they might band it a bit where, yes, teachers are getting their prep, students are getting a specialist time. But they may have to, they may, they would, by grouping it, it keeps the students together with the teacher and keeps that cohort of students together during the specialist time.
And I think part of the goal was, and I know our elementary principals worked with elementary specialists, was to have maybe the fifth grade and part of the fourth grade work with a particular, one of our, perhaps an art teacher. And to Jeff's point, they might have art for, as the only specialist for a certain amount of time. That also could be a way of another teacher supporting students in other ways that I'm sure they will think of great ways to do that. Thank you for that.
Melissa?
Thanks, Lee. I do have a couple of questions that came to mind as I ponder this back to school option versus what I've heard in the community and what I've heard through our meetings, Terry, which I appreciate that we're able to do that. At the top of the meeting, we said back to basics and how important it is to have that rigor. I appreciate that the governor did allow the districts to be able to make the decision on our own. It falls in line with the local control that we are afforded, so I was, I was very pleased about that. He gave guidance and the MDE gives guidance as well. I've, I've heard today, this is the first time I'd heard that, but Jeff, maybe you could speak more. And Terry, you mentioned that the option of in-person learning is off the table. I think our community needs to hear why this option is off the table.
I guess, I guess, when I look at the data, so to be full in-person, if I heard last Friday that right now Scott County, that number was at a 23.7. And in-person for all students would be if those numbers were between zero to nine. In-person learning for elementary and hybrid for secondary would be between 10 and 19. So based on that data point that Scott County shared with me, my recommendation would be to follow that and to, to recommend the start of the hybrid.
And can you help with that data? Because does that show specifically population that is under 18?
No.
It's just across the board, all age groups?
Correct.
Including nursing homes, okay. The, and I've heard this also tonight, several people have mentioned that it's the law. The people wear masks. It is not the law, it's an executive order. The only law that our state has in this area is in regards to concealing identity. That's a law. The people cannot conceal their identity, but this is an executive order and it's not a law. So I think if we continue to call it a law, I think we're going to get a lot of community pushback on that. So I need more clarification, I, I think the whole board does, in terms of the, the Wednesday flexible instruction days. Many families, they're sharing the experience that they have with digital learning. I mean, we, we've done our best this last spring, but for those families that want their student to be able to have more instruction on a Wednesday, what does that look like for them? Or do you have to have an IEP or a 504? What are the, what are they going to be the more of the parameters that we can, that a student can attend? Because that question will be asked.
So yes, there are, you know, as you heard Deb Anderson speak in the work session, for students that have an IEP or 504 EL, they're talking about a scaffold of criteria to, to determine if students need more time in, in the school to receive their service minutes or receive additional support. We do need, you know, we will be spending more time fleshing out those details and getting those plans in place. For the flex day, that can be during, that can be for intervention time, students may need additional help. It could be teachers saying, hey, I need to work with this group of students and having those students come in to get additional help. It could be the students saying, I need additional help on this in order, on this concept in order to stay caught up or to have it re-talked or to get some additional component. Majority of students on the flex day will be doing distance learning. And so that's the key piece here to keep in mind. It's not a free day for every student to come into the, to the school during Wednesday, but it is going to be structured so that students that need additional help, that will be worked through the teacher in order to give that additional support.
So what I'm hearing you say is that a parent or, or a student could self-advocate and say, my student needs more help and I would like them to come in on Wednesday?
They certainly could self-advocate.
Okay. And it does say in here, most Wednesdays, is it going to be every Wednesday?
One of, yeah.
It says most.
One of the things that we did, and this goes back to the, the request as part of this overall plan is to change, the change in the calendar. We had a couple of professional development days, one was on a Friday.
A Monday.
Were on Mondays. And we changed those to Wednesdays so that we would, we would be able to maintain those Mondays as instructional days in that hybrid model. So those Wednesdays would, we would maintain as professional development days and they would not be flexible instruction days.
Okay. Thanks. Now, I'm assuming that there was a conversation or discussion about the concept of a clear plexiglass partition that could be moved in front of the teacher so that they could be in the front of the classroom or they could move it around the classroom, maybe our dogs create it or something. So that enables them to be able to have a barrier that's very inexpensive, to be able to communicate so the students could see them clearly. I've got a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of pushback and a lot of parents saying, hey, you've got, these kids are sitting in their desk. Why not be able to, because they are six feet apart, they pull their mask down, there's a barrier between the teacher and them and they're six feet so that they, the teacher can see the interaction, can see the learning in their face. If they get up or move, then they put the mask on. But what about a plexiglass barrier? We see it at all of the grocery stores, we see it at all the massage and all of the nail salons, every place we go.
So we've not had, had the conversation about a plexiglass barrier that teachers would move around with them? That, there would be a cost associated with that and I know you could speak to that. The one thing that you also heard earlier was the plastic face shields. It is, now while the plastic face shield is not a suitable substitute for a mask, it can be used by instructional staff to wear if they, if they believe that the regular mask impedes the learning or, you know, provides a barrier to the learning of what they're trying to teach. So we do have those masks that teachers will be able to use so that they can communicate and, you know, so that students can see their facial expressions, you know, see, you know, the mannerisms in which they're trying to convey. As far as the students are concerned, from the executive order, as you pointed out, it is a public building and students are to wear masks. So in addition to distance, social distancing, washing their hands, the cleaning protocols that, that our, that our team spoke to, it is the expectation and it is something in a public building, per the executive order, students are to wear their masks.
Unless it impedes learning is what he says in, in that. If it impedes learning, then no mask is required.
I, I haven't seen that.
That's what it said today. We'll get into it in the mask policy later on tonight, I suppose. And then lastly, again, in that spirit of rigorous learning and having the board more involved, currently the resolution, as we ponder that, the resolution says that Terry will have the total authority to further restrict our parameters to go to distance learning. But the board needs a pluper approval for less restriction. I think it should be opposite. If we consider the emotional support of students, of, of children that have not, when they're not in school, they are a tremendous risk. We've heard that during this virus time, the spring. Domestic violence was through the roof. These kids need to be in school. They need the safety in the, of the four walls of the school. I would assume and I would encourage my fellow board members to have the board involved if it gets restricted even more, where we're pushing the kids out of the school and into the districts, distance learning again.
Any other comments from anyone? Mary?
So I had a couple of follow-up questions. And first of all, for all those people listening, I would highly encourage them to listen to the full study session before this because I think we had a good two hours, not only worth of presentation that was more detailed than what we saw here, but also we had quite a number of questions that may answer the same questions that people at home and people who cannot be here in person have. So I think that's really, really important. I did have some follow-up questions and of course, as we're seeing this presentation, as we're hearing other questions, et cetera, come through, they kind of, they kind of start to, you know, we come up with them or remember something. So I want to continue on with some of the questions that I had. And the first thing I want to address, and I think it's been something that we've all experienced on the board, is both the parents and the teachers emailing us and with their own ideas, what fits for them, et cetera. I want to recognize that everyone's situation is different here. There is no one size fits all, there never has been for education. But there are people, particularly our instructors, that have particular concerns because they're going to be exposed. Something that Jonathan brought up in a question to the activities director, Russ Reeds, was the number of infections that we did know about from the summer sports program. The fact that a lot of those may come from outside the school district too. So there is a safety precaution. And regardless of what somebody believes or doesn't believe, it's our responsibility to be able to protect everybody and to respond appropriately so that everyone feels safe. It's going to be really hard for teachers to educate as well as students to learn if people don't feel safe within their own idea of safety. And I know it's going to be hard to wear masks. But in that light of those infections that were talked about or those reported positive tests, I want to revisit the transition piece again because we, some of the transition stuff we talked about is if the governor, you know, or if the numbers for this county change. And before I go into that, knowing that there may be people listening, I want to add that we've gotten a lot of emails from people that say, okay, well, the school in Minneapolis is doing it this way, the school in St. Paul. If you look at the grid, the grid is based upon county, we're in Scott County, those other districts happen to be in other counties. So they're going by different percentages. So there, that you have to take that in consideration when you're comparing. But with regards to the transition. Like everybody else. I want, I got older kids and I want them in school. I know parents feel the same way, but they also have concerns about the consistency. So I would ask that we reiterate what's going to happen with the transition. Where we have time to prepare. So in other words, if the numbers start to rise, we can bring kids back into school. What happens if we do have an outbreak in the school? And if we have certain circumstances, do we have scenarios that have worked out? Have to take emergency action and how will that impact education? How will that impact, and we talked about the instructional hours. Educators have to plan to go between, you know, hybrid learning to full distance learning. Lessons plans, the grouping of the students, et cetera. How are we going to do that in a very expeditious manner in order to maintain the health?
Well, I think just as we've seen, you know, as we've seen and I've watched the data all summer long, you know, it's, I think the other thing that we're looking at, there could be those cases that there's an incident that happens at a particular school and we make a decision about that school, you know? And, and I sure don't have to wait for a Friday to call my incident command team together and for us to do that. You know, we, we, we will be well-prepared to, to, to take a look at that. In terms of the logistics of exactly how that will happen, you know, because our students will have a device, right? That was, that was something that we had to deploy last spring and now our students will have a school issued device. As our, as our teachers are able to start the year, we'll start some of those routines and we'll, because the students, if we start in a hybrid model, because some of that work will be at home with distance learning or with the home hybrid, it won't be so foreign to some of the students who maybe, you know, I guess our youngest students who weren't in school last year. The rest of our students were in school last year. So they understand, well, we have a much improved distance learning program. They understand what that's like. If our teachers need, you know, again, where would we be at? We have some built-in days. MDE will allow some flexibility. And if we have some days that we would take as a transition day in order to make sure that our teachers have time and support to make that change, we would certainly look at that. You know, the other part of that is looking at what families would need, you know? That's one of the things Kelly Bossen talked about, when we, if we were to move from a hybrid to a distance learning model, is if that would impact childcare and how quickly could we do that as well?
You know, the, the, the primary concern is the stability of the planning and with so many moving parts in this environment and what we've all been experiencing, trying to get to a point where we have some sort of certainty about how things are going to go so the families can proactively plan for that, not just in the first quarter, but in general. So getting as much information out there about how that's going to work, I think would be very, very important. Another thing that I wanted to kind of ask about is the, and in addition to my other questions, had to do with the ability for, we've heard a lot, I know I've heard a lot, that the iPads, particularly for families, even in the hybrid environment when they're home during those three days of the week potentially, that the iPads are not necessarily sufficient to do a lot of the work on. Can, will there be extra Chromebooks for certain families to be able to check out or any other devices? Will there be that opportunity?
You know, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that comment. I know we had some iPads that were not working and some legacy iPads. I know for last spring that we had to swap out with Chromebooks. So I'd like to hear more about that, if there's certain work components that students are not allowed to do. The other thing is, as you know, as a board, we've talked about our current inventory of equipment. And there is, there, we, we do have challenges. Not to say we can't swap equipment out, certainly if there's, if there's an iPad or Chromebook that's not working, we're going to get one that works for a student. But we don't have an exhaustive inventory to be able to allow multiple devices or swap things out for students.
Okay. There's still a lot of details that need to be worked out.
Right.
But at this point, we're getting a little too far down the path. I absolutely agree with you, the more information we get out to parents, the sooner, the better for planning. But as Dr. Sala said, we're working in a gray area. It's not, unfortunately, it's not black and white. We don't know what's coming. This could all change in two weeks before, three weeks before school starts, I think. So I guess I'd rather keep it a little bit higher level right now, knowing that we're expecting more information to keep coming to us and to the community and to the parents as soon as possible. Because I agree, the more they can know, the better. We can't communicate enough, often enough for them. And at the same time, they need to take the responsibility of checking everything that we're sending to them as well. So I guess I'd rather, you know, move on if there's anyone else that has other questions regarding the plan.
I've got a question about the kids company because that's a question, Terry, that I asked you on the phone just yesterday. So for the families that can't have distance learning and they, and they need to work, we had kind of talked about the ability and I believe it was mentioned in the earlier conversation and presentation during the study session, but not here, about a first come, first served, to sign up to, let's say, during the day, kids company, et cetera. And one of the questions that I had left over was many of the kids company activities had to do with, let's say Minecraft and stuff like that during the day. So if families were able to get into that program, not tier one staff, et cetera, that we've already talked about, that I think it's great that we're replying that, but if they needed cover for their kids during the day, which a lot of them will from eight, from K through eight, can they sign up to be in those environments during the days they're not in school?
So yes, there, and I, again, I'm going to answer this and Kelly Bossen's going to have a lot more of the details that she's working on. Our goal is, and again, this will be dependent upon the space- will be dependent upon the space capacity, you know, in our buildings. We need to ensure that we have the childcare for the Tier One employees, the children of those. But then, yes, that would be the, the hope would be that we can support families. So if they're supposed to be home in the hybrid model on a Tuesday, that we would have space so that they could be in Kids Company. Kelly's working really hard to figure out, how can we really have that also be a support for learning?
Okay.
So some of the activities, you know, and certainly there's breaks and there's going to be a schedule that's done. But we also really want to support families and students in this. And if the students are in that program all day, we want to be sure that we're helping them during that synchronous time when they're going into a morning meeting with the rest of their class on their home hybrid days, that we're supporting that, that we're helping them with the independent work that they're supposed to be doing. You know, we also don't know what other staff we might have because, again, there is no funding that comes with that requirement to have Tier One childcare. So this isn't, you know, something that just community ed is responsible for, though they'll be able to, you know, help us out with their expertise. But we'll also be looking at what other staff can help support learning for the students that are there as well. So in terms of Minecraft and some of those kinds of things, I just, I can't speak to the level of that. Again, I think everybody has to-
It wasn't the Minecraft. It was basically because they did have equipment in there. So if the same equipment can be used that way, could the kids, if parents needed to, is there an opportunity? And I know this is a question that I know you still needed to follow up on, but I thought I'd bring it up because if they have the ability to be in front of a computer and doing some of their work during the day, that, that would help. But I understand that there's limited space.
Right. One of the things you and I talked about yesterday was, we don't have computer labs in most of our elementaries anymore. I don't know if we have them in any of our elementaries. So, yeah, you know, I can think right now. I know Jeffress Pond did have a computer lab where students were in Kids Company that used that. And, you know, I, we just don't know what space will be available at this point.
Any other comments or questions? Stacy?
I just have one. And this is going to be kind of a generic, I mean, not generic, I shouldn't say broad. You know, and I know the number of board members here and have been watching their emails, and a lot, obviously, a majority of them have been around staff feeling safe in the buildings. And so I guess, I'm asking, what would you say to, you know, staff in the sense of, I know we talked about having some PD for them and just the protocols. I know we've been pushed to get all this in, and it's hard to get them all the information about, we're going to provide a safe environment for you, for you. So I just thought I'd give you the floor here a little bit and just say-
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
You know, what, what would you say to them?
Obviously, you know, I'm, my expertise is education, and I'm looking to our health experts to help me have wisdom to make decisions based on the science and the data. And Maureen spoke about both the requirements and the recommendations from the Minnesota Department of Health that, again, we've been building plans around and paying attention to all summer. Our goal would be that once staff get a chance to review all of those protocols, and I know many of them have even seen the document that Jim referred to around the return to work that we used all summer, my hope would be that they do feel more confident when they see that how cleaning is going to take place, or that we limit activities in our schools at night to ensure that we've got cleaning being done. You know, I think the other reminder, and I, I know it's different than having a prior-like high school open at 50% capacity, is since March, we have had staff working with kids almost every single day. And we've used the protocols and we've used the flow charts. And, you know, I know, I know Russ spoke a little bit about some of the incidents with the athletics. I think the work around the childcare, where we had kids all summer, you know, went really well. Those protocols were followed and, and I think it went really well. So I, you know, we all understand, I mean, this is, this is our daily life, you know? And I understand staff and their concerns about safety. And our role is to work with them to ensure that the protocols that we do put in place are followed with fidelity. And we teach staff and we teach kids how to follow those as part of our professional development as we start returning in the fall.
I just have one more.
You have one more?
Yeah, just to kind of think. I just wanted to kind of clarify, because I was looking at the resolution of what Melissa had said. Because I know when we had a meeting Friday, we talked about this, too. And I just wanted to clarify the reading in here as far as moving from the different, I, I don't see it in here that, I mean, I, I see that you have to notify the chair and the board, but there is no meeting.
Correct.
No matter what way we move. I just want to make sure. I, that's what-
She just notifies us, but she's making the decision rather than the board.
Correct. Okay.
Distinguishing, because we're shutting down, I mean, we're shutting her down, and the board should be involved in that discussion.
Okay. I thought, I thought you had said there was-
You had mentioned one way or the other.
I thought you had mentioned one way, that there was one way that she had, we had to have, okay. I just was making sure.
I meant to-
I'm going to read the resolution when we get there.
Right.
Yeah, no, I just-
The only addition that I would have to the resolution is, we made very few changes to the Minnesota School Board Association Model Resolution. I added a little bit more, I think, in the last, whereas, to ensure that Scott County data and some of those other mitigating factors were in there. Otherwise, the, the resolution was not changed much at all from MSBA's Model Resolution.
So-
And not all, not all school districts, it's interesting because, as you know, I meet with superintendents weekly, and last Friday met with about 45 metro superintendents. And not all districts are approving the resolution, you know? So that's, that's a choice that districts have.
So just given the timing of this, I know now is now, whatever, August 10th, and you're obviously going to be having updates. And I know, you know, there's been concern, I know from the board and even from the community, that the numbers are trending upward, maybe going up towards that 30, you know, who knows? But we have time. I mean, even if we approve this tonight as hybrid, there is still time if we see that number hit 30. I mean, I guess is what I'm trying to change before.
Absolutely. And, and I guess that's a, that's an excellent point, you know? And again, if, if the data next week warrants something, I'm going to come back to you with a different recommendation. If on the 24th, when we are together for a study session, the data is at a place that's different, I would at that time, should, should you approve the resolution this evening, I would come back with you on the 24th so that we had a board vote about that start of the year. Because that is, you know, the intent is that boards do, if you're going to go the right route of the resolution, that they do as part of that base learning plan. It's the model of all of the learning models as well as the recommendation for how you're going to start the year.
But a lot of the feedback you got from parents up until this point was, they want to know now. I mean, they, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's why you're-
Well, and that was, yeah, and you know, the, the timing and, you know, the, the timing of none of this has been perfect. And we've, you know, hopefully, hopefully our community and parents and staff know, you know, we've been working around the clock to try to time all of these things out perfectly, and it's not always great. You know, there were a lot of families who were, you know, upset. And I understand when we sent that first request out, the form for the Digital Learning Academy, and, and they said, well, I don't know how you're going to start the year, so I can't make this decision. So we extended that, you know, I, we heard, heard their concerns and we extended that timeline. But yeah, many of those emails and board members, you saw many of those as well, just said, how are we going to start the year? And, you know, that was just, I think that's, there's human nature in that. I was, as much as all of you anticipating, and our parents anticipating, that we would know that the week of July 27th. And, and with the framework that we heard about from MDE and the governor, you know, we, we have a different, had some more learning to do around that framework and around using that data in order to make the recommendation. You know, there, one of our neighboring districts has decided to wait until later to make that recommendation of how to start the year. Many others have already announced. But yeah, I, I definitely got the sense from our community that, that they'd like a decision, and I think are, are expecting that.
Jonathan?
Back to the teachers issue, we certainly have heard from many of them, most of them being the ones that are very concerned and very fairly concerned. Can you speak briefly, though, to the involvement that, that, that teachers had in creating this plan? Because they did, and you had a lot of work with the bargaining unit. And so I think, you know, the folks that we've heard from via emails are, are, do represent a, a specific group of teachers. And it, it's important, and their view matters, and I have great empathy for them. And I also think that the, the leadership of the bargaining units, my understanding that they feel comfortable and confident with this plan. I was, in hindsight, it would have been helpful if they could have participated.
Well, Sean, Sean Vodat was planning on being here. We actually had asked him to be a part of the presentation, and he, he had a medical issue that he needed to, to deal with this evening, so was unable to be here. Yeah, you know, we, I think Chrislyn went through the, the multiple ways that staff members had opportunities for input, some of it surveys, some of it focus groups, some of it meetings with their principals. In addition to that, I know there were small groups planning the hybrid distance learning and in-person teaching models from the beginning. But Sean sat at the table for all of our district planning, planning meetings. And as of last week, we had other union, secondary union leaders who, who also were with us for planning days and greatly influenced some of the plans and some of the changes to the plans. So that doesn't mean it was all teachers, you know? So I'm sure there are teachers that, that didn't feel that. But we were intentional in inviting leaders of the, the teachers' union especially to be involved on that district planning team, to be a part of it.
That's helpful. You know, the, the, I think the comment about, or the, the question about whether you should be coming to us on an ongoing basis with changes, in, in, in my mind, the resolution is how we, as a board, determine that we want to have the district governed, because that is our role, and establishing that we are going to follow the guidelines. And that, in, in a sense, you're not making a lot of decisions. You're analyzing the data and doing what the data and the science is going to be telling you to do, that we have already instructed you to follow by approving the plan and passing the resolution. And in my mind, that's an appropriate way for this to be handled.
Terry, could you, I, I'd like to build on what Jonathan said a little about that and start about the teachers and the educators themselves. You know, I, and I'm not sure the, the language, I think Jim could help. Are they, are the educators considered essential workers?
The, the instructional, and I don't, I don't have the wording in front of me, but in the, in the Tier One essential workers, there's a line, I don't know if you've got it right there.
Provide direct instruction or provide-
But just so it's on the microphone, I just want to pass along what Jim said, is that the Tier One educators is, they provide instruction or provide childcare for emergency workers. And I know in, in another, one of the other criteria for Tier One, I believe, Emily, am I right, that our child nutritious services workers would fall under one of the other categories? So it'd be classified as Tier One. So we looked at, we looked at all of the data to see how many additional staff that could impact. And, you know, one of the questions we asked is, you know, if they were able to come back or if childcare was provided, would they be able to? So that was important to us. And Jim, I don't know if you want to come to the microphone and add a little bit more about, you know, number one, we want to have a kind of culture where we support our staff. And we also know that if there were staff that had to take leaves or something like that, that we, that would also be a cost to us.
So there was really three choices. They could say yes, coming back, end the conversation, right? Second was yes, unless childcare is not available. And then the third was no, and I would be requesting a leave or possibly an accommodation. So that was the three. We had 100 and some folks, excuse me, employees now, so we're talking all employees out of the 1,400 that got the email, say yes if childcare is available. So we're looking at that now and exactly to see what that number is, because there's some things there that then we have to peel that back a little bit, because we can offer it, but it's only to be offered to folks that live in the district. So it'd have to be employees who live in the districts, district who kids would be eligible to come to school here. So there's others that would say yes, but they don't live in the district. So we're going to have to look at those, excuse me, we'll have to look at those numbers.
So let's talk about the accommodations, because like even on this board, Enrique had, you know, is still working, no offense Enrique, I'm used to use a guinea pig, you know, but he has the option of performing, you know, his job, his board duties virtually. So when you're talking about accommodations, how did we decide what teachers or what educators and general staff, you know, weren't comfortable, would prefer to do distance learning only versus comfortable enough to show up in the classroom? And I don't understand how that worked. And I don't understand what type of accommodations were actually available.
We're not through that process yet.
Okay.
Right? So when you look at ADA accommodations or for reasons for being able to take leave, we're looking at all the guidance that's out there now. The reasons that someone could take the emergency childcare leave or the emergency FMLA leave or the accommodation process, which we would go through in an interactive interview process and talking to each employee to see if we can accommodate based upon whatever they have going on.
Okay.
So we have to go through that whole process yet.
All right. And, and I'm just trying to compare that with the families that then don't feel comfortable, you know, being one of the 37 kids, you know, maximum on a bus, stuff like that. And, and, you know, and the funny thing is, and I've mentioned this before, when push came to shove, you know, everyone's kind of nervous about this, right?
A lot of anxiety.
We can't control a lot of things. We do know that trying to provide opportunities for kids to learn in a traditional environment as much as possible is probably best for them.
Right.
I get that. I understand the issue that we're in. But I also have to understand the personal accommodations that parents of children, families want because they're exposed at home to maybe immunocompromised people, kids who have asthma, you know, I mean, there's, you know, families who just aren't comfortable, et cetera. And, you know, we're hearing that, as Jonathan pointed out, from the educators. And I'm just wondering, you know, with the staffing models and with the level of comfort and their ability to teach, et cetera, given the circumstances, what are we doing to mitigate the staffing issue? What are we doing to make sure everyone's comfortable? What are we doing, you know, and it's, it's not really different between staff and student either, because some students may feel that they, they learn best in that hybrid or probably in a full-time classroom, but yet they're nervous about the situation. I understand all the, all the, all the controls put in place, but it's, you know, and we talked about this a little bit earlier, it's about the enforcement of those controls and how quickly we can react if something does go awry. And that's, that's kind of where I'd like to see you address it, just particularly on the record here, because I know we talked about this, questions were asked during the study session. But to try and reiterate that a little bit more here to get a better idea of how those two play together. And Terry, by the way, I mean, I know that one of the issues we've had, and you keep bringing it up, is until we find out what parents want to do, what families are choosing, and then marrying that up with the staffing models, is one of the variables that we're going to have to deal with fairly quickly, knowing that we're still in a volatile environment and it can change. So that kind of plays into this.
Oh, I'm not sure what your question is.
I think you're going into an area that is still evolving, Mary. I think you're going into an area that's still evolving because of what you just said. It's very volatile. And I, I, I caution us to not press them for questions like that. I understand we need to get the information out, people want to know. But some, there's some limitations to it at this point.
I understand that.
I will say this, though, Mary.
So I would like to move this along.
And I just, one thing. So anybody that answered no, that thinks they may need an accommodation or they may need a leave, we're reaching out to them individually, my staff is, that's the, the level of granularity we're doing, in reaching out to that individual and say, let us help you walk through this process and- you walk through this process and tell you if an accommodation can be made or if you're eligible for a leave based upon all the guidance. So we're reaching out to everybody individually. No one's going to be left out of that, but the guidance itself will be based on all the guidance that we see out there now in statute or by whatever's available to them. So, but we'll have a lot more, we'll have a lot more answers for you in about a week.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Specifically ask Enrique?
I've asked Enrique, he's not responding.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments Enrique?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I have a question more with respect to instructional design. Teaching in the classroom and teaching at a distance, it's two different animals, two different models, requires two different sets of skills, and you would approach that instructional design in a completely different way. I know for myself, it's at least one month to put together a class for an online learning environment, regardless of whether it's synchronous or asynchronous. So I, I know that there were some comments before about the built team being involved or having some meetings with them. I'm looking for a little bit more color around that level of engagement and involvement as we look to select one of these different options. And I guess to frame it up properly, we want to enable and equip all learners to reach their full potential. And I want to know how we're going to do that in this hybrid environment where we have a mix of in-class, a mix of at-home learning with just weeks to go before the actual start of the school year.
You're exactly right. Weeks to go and a lot of details to flush out. I know through the summer, I know Dr. Schutenger has been working with elementary teachers, middle school teams and high school teams to flush out those questions. Those will, that will be a work in progress. From the standpoint of educational tools, resources, students having access, it is different. It, it's not, having students in person and hybrid home and a distance learning academy, those are different things. And, and so it, it is going to rely a lot, we're going to need time to continue to work through that. We learned a lot last spring. We learned some, some things that we certainly wouldn't do again, and we learned some things of how can we continue to improve. And so, given what we're looking at, that is a task that we're, that we started, we have been working on, and we're going to continue to work on to support teachers as well as provide an environment where kids can excel, kids can find connections, meaningful connections with their peers as well as the staff and build on those relationships.
The only thing that I'd like to add to that is, you know, we understand, and it was one of the themes from that very first focus group, that very first set of data points that, that Chris Lynn got from that focus group was the importance of professional learning and adult learning. So how do we support our families through this as well? But I know that, and I don't have the details, but I know Jeff and his team, you know, have tried to figure out, how do we provide additional, in addition to the start of the school year, how do we provide additional professional development for our staff? And then that was also one of the things as we looked at those instructional flex days in that early release, that certainly one of our goals was to ensure that we had collaboration time for grade level teachers or department teachers. And then also an opportunity to see what additional professional development needs are going to be coming that we can, you know, turn around pretty quickly to provide those opportunities for staff.
Any other comments? I just have a couple of things I'd like to say. I believe that masks are required in public places. I think after, especially after looking at all the emails, teachers would appreciate that every student is wearing a mask. I think that needs to be enforced. And that the, the plan that's being presented to us is very much based on the data that we've been given, the guidance that we've been given from the state. And it's a, it'll be helpful for kids to be in school for a while. I feel strongly about that. If for no other reason for their mental health. I know how I felt the first time I could actually sit down and visit with some friends, even though we were 10 feet apart. It's, it's nice to be able to communicate face to face with people, and I think our kids deserve to have that in the school if we can make it safe for them and keep the teachers safe as well. And before I read this resolution, I just really want to thank everyone in the district for all the work they've done. I've, I've been in and out of this district building a number of times this summer, more times than I want to be in the summer, actually. And there's constantly people working on, on what we can do, what, you know, what maybe can happen, what maybe can't happen. Unfortunately, most of us want to be black and white, and this isn't black and white, it's gray. And it's going to change, and it's going to be volatile, as Mary said. It's going to be changing all the time, and we may be in a whole different place in two weeks when we come back to meet. So we just want to keep that in mind. And I'm asking our parents and our community members to hopefully understand that and be prepared for changes with not very much notice, if possible. So I would like to read the resolution that's been presented before us. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District 719 as follows. Section one, the superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following base learning model to open the 2020-21 school year hybrid learning model. Section two, the superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the School Board Chair and notification to the School Board to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings without School Board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary. And that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a School Board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the School Board, in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deems it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. Section three, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the School Board regarding the district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So may.
By Stacy. Second?
Second.
And Michael? Any last comments or questions? Terry?
I just, I just want to remind the board that as part of this resolution, it's those calendar changes as well. So we went, we went to approve a different calendar. It's those two professional development days that moved from Mondays to Wednesdays, and then the early release schedule on those flex days. Also, just letting you be aware of extending that childcare to all staff in our district, not just those instructional staff. So I just wanted to be sure that you remembered that that was part of the resolution as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Michael?
I just want to make a few comments just about the process. First of all, I want to thank our administrative team and our staff for involving us from the beginning. We've had a lot of emails, a lot of encouragement from both the Chair and the staff to come in and visit. I have come in several times and have made calls, and I will say that that is a reflection of my anxiety and concern in, in this entire pandemic situation. I also want parents and teachers to know that we have read every email that has come through. I have gotten calls from parents and teachers, and I have made calls to parents and teachers. You are all being heard and seen, and that is part of why this is such a hard thing to get our heads around. We've had some really tough decisions in the past where we've all lost sleep and poured over data, but I think this is the hardest one that we've had to think about. What it comes down to for me is to admit that I had all these human wavering moments where I thought, well, you know, if we just could second guess the data, it looks like it's going up, so let's call it early and let's just focus on this. And that puts my filter and my concerns and my wanting to put everybody in a bubble and keep them safe, that puts that forefront. But what I do if I try to sway our staff to make decisions that way is I take away the framework the Governor has given you. He has, could have come and said the entire state is in hybrid or all in distance. Instead, he said, here are the guidelines to use in your district. So what I just want to clarify is that I don't feel like the administration is coming advocating or fighting for a choice. I feel like they were given data and said, based on the data, this is our recommendation. And I feel with as much wavering as I have done about how to start the school year, I trust the process. I trust that people smarter than me in the field of education and health can provide these, this data. And I don't think we can take that away from you. I don't think we can expect you to leave with confidence or integrity or be intentional if we try to convince you to go a route other than the data shows us. I also trust you as a human being to be sensitive to the concerns of your teachers and your staff, and I have seen that. I also want our public to know that we have had staff working on-site all summer. These are not administrators or kids co-staff or, or child nutrition staff or custodians who've been sitting behind a desk at home on Zoom meetings, but they have been here and working, and that's helped us test through those protocols for what we do if somebody gets sick. And that brought me a calming sense too, to know that we're not coming in cold to this procedure. So I, I know this may change. I may, you may come to us in two weeks and say the numbers are here, I'm using the plan the Governor gave us. And I have to change my recommendation for this base model. And then going forward, I trust you to make those decisions, and I trust our staff. And I just want to express my gratitude to everybody. We have an incredible team at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, from our leaders to our custodians, to our teachers who wrote letters about how much they love teaching and how much they love their students and care and fear for them even. And our child nutrition staff who fed hungry kids all summer long and are going to continue to do that, right? Everybody in our district has poured their heart into it, and they're here for the right reason. And I trust them going forward to do what's best for our kids. We have to do health and safety first and educational rigor second, but I trust that both are going to be addressed. So I just wanted to say that before we vote.
Any other final comments?
Michael did a great job there, and I'm not going to try and do better than that. And I think you can hear the emotion in her voice, which I will tell you, I think from, you know, my years of sitting here, this is one, if not the one, hardest decisions, or one I guess I never thought I would have to make, is about sending our, operating our district under a global health pandemic. But I do want to just thank Dr. Stallow and her staff and all and everyone involved. I think they've put in numerous, numerous thousands of hours here over the summer in, in making this plan and continuing to evolve and change and as the guidance moved and as things happen. And we're going to need that as, as we go forward with this year, because we don't know what's going to happen. And I think, you know, as, that is kind of the new way of life as it is here. One thing I do want to say to my fellow board members is I really appreciate everyone's comments. I think over the last couple of meetings, I don't know how everyone's going to vote on this, but I will say this, that I do respect everyone's opinion, and I do believe that everyone will be voting with what they think is the best for our kids and wholeheartedly, because I think this weighs on all of us. So I, I thank them for their conversation and respect or through this process. So I am supportive of the hybrid model, and I think we have to follow the data. I think that's what, where we're at right now with, with how things have been guiding over the last, you know, five to six months here. So I will be supporting this resolution going forward.
Jonathan?
One of the emails we got in the past week or so from a community member had 95 separate questions. Every one of them a reasonable and fair question about a specific thing to ask about. And as I, as I was reading it, it occurred to me just the enormity of the task that all of you had, because you had to answer all those things. I mean, it's, and, and, and more, and many, many more. And so I will reiterate the addition, the thank yous and the appreciation for the work of the team and everything you have done. Over the course of the past few years, the community has put each of the seven of us in these roles. The community never thought we were going to be having to decide what to do in a pandemic. We certainly never thought we were going to have to be making these decisions. But I do, I respect the fact that people have trusted us and trusted us to make good decisions on behalf of the school district. And so I, that, I think we all feel that, and I think it's worth noting. I will be supporting the resolution. Just a couple of moments to walk through my rationale for it. And I do have a request of the community that I'm going to make at the end. Science and data. I mean, it's science and data, it is science and data. I trust it. I trust Dr. Fauci, I trust Dr. Micro Ulsterholm. I believe people who have spent a lifetime studying this stuff and made it their life's work know more about it than I do, and I think it makes sense to listen to them. So for me, it, there's no hesitation that the Governor's guidance, MDE's guidance, MDH's guidance are based on science, and that is what we should follow. I have confidence in the Scott County Public Health officials to, to consolidate the data and get it to you accurately so you can make decisions. I have confidence in district officials to execute the plan that we will hopefully approve. Without a doubt, the hardest part of this decision, as my colleagues have said, is thinking about the teachers that are going to be in the buildings and the concerns that they have. There were multiple emails that I'm sure every one of us, if, when we got to the end, we needed a tissue, because it grabs your heart. And it, and it is felt. I had a conversation with one of our teachers today who said, again, talked about we don't get the choice, right? Families do get the choice, as we were saying. Families get to decide to distance learn, harder for our teachers. And one of them said, I thought about, how did the Target workers feel? And how do all the healthcare workers feel? And she said, I, I, I think I can relate to what all of those folks have been through over the course of the last six months. My daughter cleaned carts at Target all summer. My wife shoves swabs in people's noses on a regular basis to test them. It's, it's close to, in my family, to understanding how big of a concern it is. So it's, we all, we, we all have, I think, a great deal of empathy for our staff and appreciation for our teachers and that they are going to be, none of them signed up when they decided to become teachers, literally and figuratively have their lives somewhat on the line when they go to work. I really hope at some point our community can decide to do something like New York did for the healthcare workers and roll out the red carpet and celebrate these folks and appreciate them. The last thing that I would like to say is I have a heartfelt plea to our families and to our community. You've asked a lot of us, I'm going to ask something of all of you. We all want to return to some semblance of normal. We all want to send kids back to school every day. We want our athletes to be able to play, we want our band to be able to march, and we want our theater kids to be able to perform. Kids belong in school. How many times have people told us that? And I completely agree. I just add one word, safely. Kids belong in safe schools. And there's only one way that we're going to be able to make this happen as a community, and that is if as a community, wait, take it seriously. The school can do everything right from the moment your kid steps on the bus to the moment they step off the bus in the afternoon. And if you're not wearing your mask, and if they're not doing the right things in between, it isn't going to make any difference. So if we want our kids back to school full-time as fast as possible, and if we want to make sure that we don't get to 50 cases in Scott County, because if we have to go to all distance, guess what? There's no sports. You're shutting it all down. It's done. So if we want all of those things to happen, guess what? Listen to Dr. Fauci. Wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, avoid large groups. And if we all do our part, we can safely get our kids back to school. Bye.
Hard to follow, Jonathan. Are there any other comments?
Are there any other comments?
I'll take.
Mary?
Yes, first of all, I do wanna reiterate what everyone said, and I wanna thank everyone who put a lot of hard work and thought into this process. We do have a very diverse district. We have very diverse needs. Everyone can and must advocate for themselves and make the best decisions possible for themselves and their students. And we want people to do that. We want them to have the choice. I think it's very important that they have that choice and they feel safe or they feel that they can participate as needed. Again, nobody's gonna be able to participate for long if we don't advocate, enforce, and follow the rules, no matter what happens. Also, we have a lot of different scenarios that will fit some individuals, some of them won't. I know that the educators in this district are gonna do whatever they can with the resources that are provided in order to provide the accommodations for those who need it in any situation. We may not be perfect at it, but we're certainly going to try. Furthermore, the education system, it's not just math and science. It is educating the whole child. It's a holistic system, and that holistic education includes social engagement and the ability to do that. So the sooner we can get back to that fully, the better. Because, by the way, if you take that part of the, of their educational way, no one benefits. We're seeing, we are hearing and seeing mental health issues as a result of the isolation, and we need to do something about that. This is also confounded by, in our district, we have quite a duality. We have differing opinions. We have politics. We have a lot of family-based economic uncertainty, and the numbers or data, they, they vary every day, and that's part of the uncertainty that leads to the instability. However, I think people need to understand as a whole, we are a public institution. We are paid for by the taxes of this district and of the state as a whole. So our decision on how to go forward is truly our own. I don't think it was any surprise for those people who are involved at the Capitol that the governor came out and said local control. I think that was very predictable. I don't think it was any surprise. He was waiting to get just some sort of, you know, standard grid of how to follow and how to provide those recommendations. Unlike other states, Minnesota's never one to mandate one thing. I know we have a mask mandate, but to mandate whether kids stay home or go to school is not something that anyone predicted, and I truly believe that was pretty much in the, in the cards as early as May and June. But no matter what the board does tonight, even if it takes the input under advisement and continues to discuss, it's not gonna be sufficient. Nobody's gonna be satisfied. No matter what decision we come with, there's gonna be people who like it, people who don't. Every single school district in the state and around the country are in a similar situation. We can learn from each other. But we still need to keep everyone safe. That's the only common denominator, and we've also seen examples in the news of where they have just let the floodgates open and then dealt with the consequences. Those are consequences that will only push us backward and won't push us forward. You know, I'm not an educator. I do teach, like, like, like other people here on the board. I am a second, a post-secondary teacher once in a while, but I don't prepare lesson plans for anyone K through 12 on a regular basis, let alone in these various models, nor do I ever want to. I leave it up to the actual educators to do this. The teachers are our frontline staff. They know how to educate. They know how to meet the needs of each student, given the tools at their disposal. And by the way, those tools are never enough or never ideal. Each educator on their own must make a commitment to go forward in their positions and they feel comfortable, just like we're asking our families to do. I can't imagine what it would be like to have to teach under these environments. I can't imagine what they must be going through. It's unprecedented for everybody, and that's what we're in. We're not going to get perfection, but if we do it right and we do it consistently, hopefully we'll get out of this sooner than later. I do wanna make a statement because we did, we had a lot of lessons learned in the last half of last year. I believe that we have developed a lot of new skills and we've gotten to know our students a lot better, and I'm hoping that this will help everybody as we go forward on this journey. I do know one thing. I'd like to see some stability at first, and I'm still on the fence with, I'd like to see us just go forward with one plan that isn't gonna be volatile, that's gonna provide some sort of protections and some sort of consistency for the parents, for the educators, et cetera, so we don't end up in a situation where the numbers go up and then the numbers go down, and we're constantly going through this, you know, roller coaster. I'm also not comfortable at, you know, abdicating the board's authority to get involved in the detailed situation with the school district. I was not, you know, thrilled that we received this plan and presentation late last week. I am very happy that the board has gone above and beyond, as well as the superintendent and the staff, to answer all of our questions in a very short amount of time. I wish we had been involved in the process a lot longer and sooner because we are the intermediary between the community and the school district, and I think we need to play that role deeper and more involved now than we ever have before. And we've never been in a hybrid situation. We've never even tried it. There's gonna be some failures. There's gonna be areas that are not going to work well, just like we weren't involved in the distance learning. Not everything worked perfectly, but we certainly learned from it. So, but we need a plan. We need some way to go forward. We need to get this over with so people can finish planning. And so I, I'm gonna go ahead and support the resolution, but I want to make it clear that I do believe that I'd like to see more involvement from the board in the day-to-day decisions on this, not in an emergency situation and not to hold up decisions, but to be aware and informed and be able to provide feedback in a timely manner because I think that's important. You know, and I'm gonna close with, in June, everyone wanted their kids back to school. In July, everyone wanted their kids back to school. The commitment letters went out and people went, oh my gosh, I gotta make a commitment. I want my kid in school, but I'm not sure I want him to come home from school. That sounds strange because they're worried about infecting their family. They're worried about what can happen, and now we're seeing a lot of uncertainty, and that's okay. Hopefully, the options that have been provided today and by the school district are gonna allow some of that uncertainty to be squashed a little bit, but please bear with us. And whatever you do in the community and everyone else, speak up. We can't advocate on your behalf either and if we don't know what's going on. So I want, for one, appreciate all the letters, pro and con, for and against, you know, accusatory, not accusatory, upset, you know, not upset. That's what we're for. That's what you should be doing, and I hope it continues. So I wanna thank everyone for speaking up.
Any other comments? Enrique? I can't tell if he's, he needs to wave.
Yes, I'm awake. I remember.
No, no, I was, you need to wave sometimes because I'm not sure that, if you wanna speak or not.
Maybe a brief comment. So members of the community, if you're watching this at home or from other location other than at DSC, you'll notice that I'm not there. The reason for that is I'm one of those immune-compromised people that shouldn't be in public places of accommodation, not because of significant risk of, because of significant risk of morbidity, mortality. That's my burden to bear. It's also my kids' burden to bear. It's my wife's burden to bear as they go out through their day-to-day, whether it's to work, out to the market, out to other places. It's that overarching theme that has become our life. My situation, our situation isn't necessarily unique. It's, there are many others out there in our community that maybe the silent sufferers that don't say anything because we're all home. We're doing the needful things to keep ourselves safe, and the prospect of sending kids back to the classroom is frightening, terrifying for some on many different levels. I have full faith that things will go the way they need to. The data suggests that we are at a spot where this hybrid environment is probably the most appropriate. I'd like to go even beyond the data to say, we need to make sure we can get the easy things right. We need to have a good, solid plan. Beyond the data, we need to make sure that our teachers are ready, that they have all the equipment, all the tools, all the training, all the support they need to be able to move back into whatever learning environment is ahead of themselves. Because they need to, they need to win just as much as we do, just as much as our learners do. They need to feel that they are succeeding and able to move forward without necessarily beating their heads up against a wall or just feeling defeated on a day-to-day basis. And my mind, shifting that dial just a little bit, it's the distance model. It's not the most attractive of the options, but it allows people to move back in and to kind of dip their, go into education, and then we can dial things up from there as we continue to grow since the distance option is still gonna be part of the hybrid. So why not get the first step right and focus on getting that nailed down extremely well before moving forward with a partial classroom option and what that looks like? So science, yes. Data, yes. There's also that component of making sure people feel empowered, that they have everything they need so that they can move forward and be successful regardless of where they are. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just wanna add one more thing. Jonathan made a comment about the person that sent in the, and we did, we got a couple of them. One was excessive on the number of questions, and I look at that a little bit different because I think we need to move on this, and I do agree with Enrique saying, I would prefer to start safe. But I think the questions that were asked were indicative of the uncertainty and the lack of information we've been able to give to the community. And I don't feel that all those questions were answered, but I'm hoping that with another month of planning, they will be. But I took that, those questions to be totally different, as well as the questions of everybody else to say, you're not giving us enough information to make our, our decisions right now, and so the sooner we can get that information out there, the better we're all gonna be.
Okay. I think, I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues on the board. Everyone's coming from a different place. I respect whatever decision you all feel you need to make tonight, and I would emphasize that this is probably the hardest one to make in many, many years of being on the board. It's, it's a tough one. I'm trying to keep it less emotional and look at the data. I agree that it needs to be, you know, comfortable for people, but we have to base it on something, and the guidance that we've been given by the state allows us to look at our data and, and make it work for us. We're not being told we have to do something specific, but we are giving direction on what our parameters are. If we go outside those parameters, my understanding is the consultant comes in and then they're gonna guide us, and I don't believe we really want that. So again, I appreciate everyone's opinions. I appreciate all the work of the district. I, I feel for the, the parents and the teachers. It's a tough decision, and like you said, we've had a lot of questions asked of us. Some of the questions that have been asked, we're not ready to answer yet. We can't. We need to start somewhere. I hate to use the chicken and the egg, but it kind of feels that way, that we gotta do something, make some kind of a decision in order to be able to answer the questions coming up so we have a direction to go in. We can't answer everything. We don't know everything. So I guess with that and with no more comments, I'll take a vote, and I'll start with Enrique.
Nay.
Melissa?
Nay.
Mary?
Nay.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jonathan?
Aye.
As I said, I respect all of your opinions, but we'll be going forward with, with the hybrid model. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item is the summer program report, including targeted services and special education. Is that Chrislyn? Or two?
Chrislyn and Melissa.
And Melissa, okay.
Good evening, everyone. And actually, I'll only be presenting on our summer targeted services programming, which is inclusive of our K eight. Oh, thank you. So just really briefly, I just wanna share what, what exactly targeted services is and then what our program objectives were for our elementary program this summer, share some feedback that we received from parents and students who participated in our elementary program, which finished on July 31st. But we are actually currently in the midst of our middle school program, so I'll share those objectives and what that kind of structure looks like too. Targeted services is designed to address the needs of students that may not be met in the regular school. Targeted services programming is for before school, after school, or summer. Those dollars are set aside by separate legislation that we can access. Student enrollment generates the revenue to sustain that programming, and programming, like I said, must occur outside of the school day for targeted services. Students must meet criteria to be included in that programming, and participation is optional. Our goal was with targeted services programming is to provide highly engaging learning experiences where students have an opportunity to build community and apply their learning in new ways, and it's really intended to address both the academic and the social, emotional needs of students, and it gives us an opportunity to work with some smaller class sizes. This summer, for elementary summer targeted services, we had 138 students participate. That program was all distance learning-based, and we had eight licensed teachers working with those 138 students. There's a picture there, just an example. Students, most of our work this summer was focused on science because it was very hands-on and highly engaging, and that's just some of our students were working with some vocabulary words around the water cycle. And then our middle school program, we have 30 students participating and we have one licensed teacher doing a hybrid model. Our goal with the elementary program this summer was to really focus on opportunities to be creative, drive, have the students drive the learning based on their interests, and then also try to embed some of those essential skills for academic success. So, you know, determining a task and bringing it to completion, some of those skills that support learning. And then it also gave us an opportunity to personalize academics and continue to build those foundational skills utilizing our iXL. So we started, you know, we were using that during distance learning, and we were fortunate enough to have access to that throughout the summer, actually, for all of our students. And that provides us with some diagnostic information where we can really target and personalize the work that students do in that program to their specific needs. So our teachers were assigning tasks to students based on their individual needs. Our elementary program was designed as a distance learning workshop. So due to the requirements based on the funding source that we were using, it did have to be completely synchronous. So we structured a workshop for students to participate in that was two hours long. They met as a whole class to build some community at the beginning portion of the workshop. Then the teachers had structured small groups because we were also doing a multi-age program, so those small groups gave some opportunity for differentiation based on those specific grade levels too, and we also mixed it up in other ways. And then while some students were doing small group, other students were preparing for their small group, working on their independent lessons, doing some of that work, and then the teachers kind of closed that workshop by bringing the whole group back together. We did provide, we did a pickup, so students had access to all of the hands-on learning materials that they would need for all of the lessons that we had planned for during that time. We did two sessions for elementary, and so students could opt in to either one or both, just to give families some flexibility in that too. just to give families some flexibility in that, too. And those were based on topics. So our first session was all about water, and our second session was all about plants and animals. So the feedback that we got overall from kids was great. We had kids on the last day not wanting to hang up their Google Meet with their teachers, which is great. That's the best kind of feedback I think we can get. We had parents very complimentary of our teaching staff. The teaching staff, the feedback from them was, distance learning is really, feels really different when you're doing it because that's your plan, right? Like when you know that you're, that's the plan, it feels different, right? So we had, they had great feedback, and they were like, this gives me a better, I feel better about doing this if this is what we have to do in the fall. Like that was the feedback we got from staff. Our middle school program objectives, very similar to our elementary program. But because we're integrating it in a hybrid and we're doing it this time of year, our goal is really to make sure that we're embedding those skills that students will need, regardless of what learning model that they come to in the fall. So especially for our sixth graders, our incoming sixth graders who are participating, like making sure, using that as an opportunity to help them build familiarity with Schoology, which is a new learning platform for them. So again, those academic skills that they'll need. And similarly, personalizing those academic, that academic development using iXL again. This is an example of some student work. They were doing some community building about their identity, like with their fingerprint. So their class is designed as a three-hour period. And so we have three groups rotating through the program. So each group will have four days in-person with the teacher, and their other days will be in a hybrid. And during their hybrid days, they have an opportunity to be synchronous with the rest of the class in-person for that community building component. So, and the feedback, I've checked in with the teacher a couple of times. The kids are enjoying the opportunity to be in school. They know it's different, but, you know, I think we're preparing them for fall.
This was an update. Does anyone have any questions?
Got one quick.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Oh, sorry.
Participation-wise?
Uh huh.
I'm, I'm sorry if I missed at the beginning. Were we up-down or, like, did a lot of people say no, yes?
Um, you know, we're comparing it against previous models. So I was, I was very pleasantly surprised with the participation that we had. To be honest, I was concerned that we wouldn't get to a place where we could support the program.
Right.
Typically, when we have an in-person summer academy program, we see attendance of about, we see participation around 300. So percentage-wise, I thought we did really well.
We had a total, and we were at 170, yeah?
Yeah.
Better than I thought it was, yeah. Okay. I was just curious about how the participation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, you know, I've seen this before. First of all, I love the program. But, you know, I keep on seeing kind of a funnel. We have a lot of kids, 138 in, in elementary, and then it goes down to 30 in middle school. Is that because of capacity of the program? Or do kids actually not need it when they move from elementary to middle school? How does that work? I've seen, because I've seen the progression before with, even before we had the distance learning and the number of kids that are in those one-off groups. And I'm just kind of curious about how that, how that works.
Just in general, why we see the number kind of go down? I think, too, you know, we're talking about convincing a 12, 13, or 14-year-old that they need to come and do a program at school in the summertime. I think, you know, part of it is just developmental is a big, is a big reason we see some of that. It's not that we don't offer that opportunity, but again, participation is optional. And, you know, it's just opting into those programs.
And the targeted learning that's going to happen during the school year, are the, are these kids going to have a similar group during this school year in particular?
So that'll be something that we continue to develop. So where do we put that programming? Because again, it can't happen during the student day. So it has to be a before-school, after-school, or after-school program. But I definitely see opportunities for us to, in, in any of the models, be able to provide some sort of programming for students to continue building those academic skills, building community, absolutely.
Is there any type of cohort? If you've got 138 kids in elementary school and then they're moving into middle school, does anyone reach out to them, or do you wait for this to be all volunteer?
As far as, like, recruiting for referral?
Following them.
Oh.
So you, you knew that they, they, they came in in the elementary level. Now so many of them are now in middle school. Do we reach out to them? Do we, how do we engage? Or do we just leave it volunteer and say, okay, you know this program exists, you can sign up?
Well, because we do have a criteria for students to participate, we actually have a pretty significant referral process that we go through to recruit and suggest programming to students and families. So that's a, that's a process that we go through every spring.
All right.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is approval of the budget calendar. Julie?
Good evening. In your packet, you've received the budget calendar. We bring the budget calendar for the whole year at this time, every year. And it just kind of goes over what will happen each month at every board meeting and every work session to keep the board updated on our budget process, enrollment, audit, levy, which is, our auditors, you know, is going on right now. And so those things, as they happen and occur throughout the year so that we get to the end of next year and we're prepared for, um, the '21, '22 budget. So if you have any questions about the budget cycle, just let me know.
There any questions?
I do have one question.
Okay.
We at one time had talked about maybe moving up the parameters for the budget going forward. And what I read is that it wouldn't be until January or February. Is that correct? No? I mean, I thought we had talked about possibly moving that into, like, November, December, at least the parameters.
For the current year or for the following?
Going into next year's adjustments to the budget that we might need to make.
In the process that we are, is we, we always, we try to make sure that we know as many students as we can for enrolling. And so a lot of our registration happens in February for the high school and for MNCAPs and those students that are attending those programs and, and the middle school as well. And then we also know how many students are coming from some of our other schools in the district, our parochial schools or Aspen Academy. So that helps us with determining our enrollment numbers. And so we kind of wait until then, and that helps us to determine what that revenue will be for the next year. Because as you know, enrollment really drives that. But that's one of the reasons that we, the process is what it is, so that we have a little bit better idea of what, what that number is.
Okay, I guess I'm referring to if we have to make any budget adjustments. We talked about parameters and having more time to discuss that.
So we, one of the things that we had talked about was that, especially now with enrollment, is waiting to see what our October 1 numbers are so that we know what we are planning on for the next year. I mean, we'll have a better idea. Because if our numbers are down, then we know we have to do a little more work for the following year.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, I believe I need a motion. By Jonathan, second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Did you say it? Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. I guess you're still up with the levy meeting date.
So this is very routine as well. Our levy certification is always on the same day as our December board meeting, which I believe is December 14th this year. And so we're asking that the truth and taxation hearing and would be at that date. Have the regular board meeting in December.
And that would be at the start of our meeting, as it says in our packet. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the levy meeting date?
Oh, made.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
By Michael? Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven-zero. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
I guess this is myself and Terry. The next item agenda, item on our agenda is the adoption of the resolution calling for a general election. This is required by the board that we have a resolution. We will have three positions open in the, in the fall going into next year. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution calling for a general election?
Oh, made.
By Melissa? Second by Enrique. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Pardon? Oh, is it a roll call? Yes, I'm sorry. Thanks for reminding me. It is a roll call. Enrique?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Jonathan? That motion carries seven-zero. Thanks, Stacy. Okay, we're moving on to policy. This is a final reading on, well, the first two policies. The one is student wellness. This has come before us. This will be our fourth reading of the student wellness policy. Nothing has changed on it, and during that time, there's been no comments made during that period of time. And I will take a motion to approve Policy 514, student wellness.
Oh, made.
By Stacy, second? Can't tell over here who's saying it. Mary? Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries seven-zero. Our next policy for final reading is Policy 531, memorials for deceased students or staff. This involves memorials, donations that are made on behalf of students. This is also the fourth time this has come before us. We had it come up, I think, I believe, starting in early June, late May. Graduation time is usually a typical time when people are speaking about memorials. So this is also the final reading, so I'll take a motion to approve Policy 531.
Oh, made. Oh, made, yeah.
Second by Jonathan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Onto our mask policy. This is going off of our protocol, but per MSBA, they would like us to look at this policy and approve it this evening. And I need to get to it, I guess, here. I'm assuming you all had a chance to read it. I know it came kind of late, I think yesterday, maybe. And again, this afternoon. So does anyone have any questions, concerns, things they want to highlight on the policy?
Yes, I do. So if you go down to definition of face covering, three, A, it goes through different types of face coverings. The first one, paper, isn't going to protect anything.
Well, I think that's what these are.
I know they are, and they're not going to protect anything. Giving you example, the one that I have should be on there. It has been ASTM F1671 passed. It's got an antibacterial coating on it.
But that's B. Well, I don't believe my mask is to protect me as much as it is to protect other people from spitting on them.
It's saying that people in the building have to wear it, okay?
Right, but I think that that's the purpose of my mask. I'm just saying, that's what I was told.
Okay, well, it's going through definitions.
Nursing profession, that's what it was, too.
Okay. It, there should be face shields on there. There's a face, if I can finish?
B is a face shield.
Shield that attaches to the head, that some people can't wear because it gives them a headache. And it prohibits, or it changes their view. You'll notice that Julie on hers, for instance, has a, has a blemish on the side. And it's, some staff are not going to be able to wear that, okay? Or they can't have anything on their head. There's a lot of healthcare workers that can't. But they can use ones like this, and this has antibacterial coating in it. It is far superior than the paper ones, is my point.
Except in his policy, the policy says that it needs to cover both your, your eyes, nose, and mouth, and that does not. I'm just going off the policy here.
This is a guidance from MSB.
Right.
Again, local control, we can have whatever we want in the policy, as you recall.
Okay.
Right, so we're having our discussion. Unfortunately, this is discussion and, and policy at the same time here. But it should, the policy is what I'm saying, it should include a face shield such as this for, for people that have, they can't breathe. You're breathing in your own CO with a paper mask, and there are many people that can't do that. So it should be allowed on this policy.
So I have a question. Are you asking to change B, the definition of the face shield? Or are you asking to take off some of the things from A?
No, A can be on there. That's fine. People believe in that. It, it, it's ineffective, but that's fine for these purposes.
Which A are you talking about? The definitions?
Right, the definitions. But if you're, if you're going to exclude this kind of mask that actually has antibacterial in it, this should be added to the list of acceptable face shields for, for staff or for, or for students, for anyone.
Okay, that's, that's your opinion on it? Did you have more to talk about with the policy?
Let's see. It's correct, no one under two should wear one? No one under two. It's contraindicated.
Right.
Maybe as Melissa's looking, is there anyone else who has a comment right now, just in the interest of time? Michael?
We had an email this morning come from MSBA at 11:55 a.m. with clarification. That compliance with Executive Order 2081, which you can click over and read the details of, is required. We can still pass our mask policy to reinforce that, but there's no way around it. We have to follow the way the governor outlined it.
That came today.
Michael, I might need you to speak a little bit louder. I'm not sure that I'm hearing you very well, or the mic isn't picking you up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We got an email this morning from the Minnesota School Board Association at 11:55 a.m. That said, they clarified that compliance with Executive Order 20-81 is required. Even if you choose not to pass it as an official policy, it is required. And there's a hot link in there to read what the outline of 2081 executive order is. So I don't think we have a choice to modify it. We have to do it as, I'm not, I haven't compared it side-by-side with our policy outlined by MSBA. But we are required to, whether or not we even pass the policy, we will have to follow those rules.
So it's, you're referring to the general statement of policy, A?
Me?
He, yeah, the, the.
You're talking about the executive order, the policy of the school that's just comply with Executive Order 2081?
Yeah.
In 2082?
And they just clarified this morning that even if we changed anything or didn't approve a mask policy, we still have to be in accordance with that. They verified that for us this morning. So we can't change those rules.
We can add whatever we like to our local policy. We can, we can have any kind of face covering we want on there.
MDE clarified the compliance is required. And so if we review their executive order, perhaps that allows us that flexibility. I haven't reviewed it, but we are required.
So let me.
We can do whatever we want.
Well, let me just.
It's our district.
Let me just clarify, we have in D, the reference to the executive order. The only thing that's above that is the description so that people know what they're doing, right? And you're just asking for the addition of the type of face shield that you're wearing to that list.
Because if you look under implementation, D, it says individuals who cannot tolerate a face covering due to a medical condition. If they cannot breathe their own CO in, they still want to appease everyone and wear face covering. This is covering the nose, and it's covering the mouth. And it's far more effective than the people that are coughing in the room right now.
It, it does say that you still have to, if you're going to wear a shield unless under certain teaching circumstances, you still need to have a mask because that does not prevent your air from coming to me.
Right, what I'm asking is that the board consider the parameters of a face shield such as this that is used widely throughout America and throughout the world. And there should be no reason why a person shouldn't be able to have something like this if they cannot breathe. We saw people here about ready to pass out because they were presenting and they couldn't breathe. It happened to Julie.
We have, we're talking about following data the whole way through, and we're talking about making our teachers and families feel safe. And the data says.
Right, and I want to make sure that our staff have the ability to wear something that is got antibacterial protection, that they're going to be able to breathe. that is got antibacterial protection, that they're going to be able to breathe in, and there's nothing wrong with this.
There is explanation in there, I believe, that covers if staff are doing a certain type of teaching.
Can I make a motion just to add her type of mask to this? And, and, and I'm okay with that?
As the policy reads, we can't go without a mask unless they're doing a special teaching situation.
This is a mask.
It is, it's a face shield.
You can't just wear that throughout the day. But if you're teaching someone how to read, for example, and you have to do.
You can wear this throughout the day.
I'm sorry, the policy states that it's for certain teaching situations or medical conditions approved at the discretion of the administration. And so if I'm teaching language therapy, for example, or speech therapy, there may be a time I take my mask off, I put my shield on, and the student may do the same so we can watch how our mouth moves, et cetera.
It's important. I agree.
Exactly, but it is not a replacement for a mask throughout the entire day.
Can I, can I just add a comment? Okay, so I, I work with people at 3M that make these and make those. And she's got a point that is even allowed because in, in hospitals with the antibacterial thing. And she has a point that the paper masks are not as effective as, let's say, what I'm wearing, which is the N95, okay? So I think we can still follow the governor's order, but I do agree that those are approved in a hospital, from my recollection, and I'm not sure this is something we should really be arguing about, because none of us are medical professionals. So if, I would not have a problem if that's approved by a hospital, just add it to the list. Because if it's antibacterial, that is what some of the health professionals are wearing. That's even what they're wearing in clean rooms.
Well, antibacterial is taking care of bacteria. We're talking about a virus. They're two different things.
Well, it's the, it's, I, I get what you're saying. And again, I'm not a medical professional. I just, I'm not sure that anyone in here are qualified to really do this. I just know I've seen those, even in Beckman Coulter's lab, where they're dealing with the virus. So I personally, I'm, I think the most important thing here is we, we cover it in face shields. If somebody wants to do the research, that's fine. I'm just not sure this is something we want to argue about, to tell you the truth. I'm really happy people are wearing masks. And if the face shield has a, has, has the medical quality, and, and if you'll provide that, then I have no problem making an amendment to this. If you guys want to wait to approve it, that's fine. I agree with Michael, though, that no matter what, the governor's order stands. I, I just, you know, us trying to argue about what's a felony.
We're not saying not wear it. We're saying mask, a shield, we're all complying.
Except that there are parts in this policy, if we're going to comply, that say that the mask needs to be, or should be, should be, covering your face, nose, and mouth. And yours does not. And then it also says.
It's to the top of my.
It's not, it's, Melissa, it's just, it's right at your eye level.
All the food service uses it.
I don't think the food service is using those masks in Prior Lake.
It's not in the definition in the governor's order.
I'm talking about Prior Lake's savage area schools. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to the restaurants. That's not my.
I thought you said a restaurant in, in Prior Lake.
No, I didn't say a restaurant.
I apologize, I couldn't hear you.
And the other part is, it also says that you should, like, Terry has a mask here, which I first, at first glance, thought that we couldn't use that based on this policy because I read this policy quickly. Since it says should, it says that there should be a piece here that blocks off the air. That's what's in this policy. So I mean, if we're going to make.
We're going to have people passing out.
I'm just telling you what's in the policy, Melissa.
It's also in the governor's order.
It's a guideline. We don't have to follow word for word.
What I'm saying is, that's what's in the policy.
It's a guideline for the local control that we're.
Melissa, this is what's in the policy. I'm not saying we're going to, whatever we're going to do with it, I'm just telling you what is in the policy, what it says.
At the executive order.
If we're going to not do those things, then let's not put in our policy. I'm not sure if we can change the policy.
So MSBA confirmed we have to comply. And here's the definition from the executive order. For the purposes of this executive order, the following terms are defined as follows. The face covering must be worn to cover the nose and mouth completely and can include a paper or disposable.
I read it this morning. We don't need another tutorial. I think we all read it.
I'm not trying to tutorial, I'm trying to say that we are required to comply with this.
We can add to this. It's something as simple.
I'm telling you the definition of a face covering in the, I'm not trying to argue, I'm trying to say here's what, and we're telling our teachers we're going to keep them safe.
I'd suggest a motion is in order.
I, I'm trying to catch up on something here, just a second.
I would, I would just suggest somebody can make a motion to amend the resolution. We can vote on it. We can get a second, we can discuss it, we can vote on it, and then we can move on.
Jonathan, we, what I'm reading here is that, Michael's right, we don't need to approve this policy.
Okay.
We do need to comply with the governor's orders.
Yep.
So if we're not ready to approve this policy, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Out of law.
But we still have to do what it says in his order when school starts.
Yep.
And it, and it, so in the emergency executive order, it was requiring that someone has to wear a face covering in certain settings. And it goes into detail, exactly.
And it defines it. It does not include that, the shield right now.
I disagree. Anyone, pardon?
That's fine.
If anyone wants to make a motion that we table this, or not table, but we wait on approving a mask policy, but we are going to follow the guidance by the governor.
I'll make that motion. We're going to follow the governor's orders, and we're going to table the definitions of the mask policy.
I don't think table is the right word, for sure.
Okay, sorry.
But I know what you mean.
Okay. And we're going to.
Further review.
Further review the policy.
Do I have a second?
Let me clarify the motion on the table.
Can you repeat your motion, Mary?
Yes, we're going to follow the governor's mandate and the executive order, but we're going to put the policy under further review, the actual wording of the policy.
You guys just said that we couldn't do it.
What?
You said that we, that we couldn't do what she's proposing.
No, we can.
It's the governor's order.
Basically, just, we have to follow the.
She's proposing two different things.
Yeah. The, the, the guidance that came from MSBA said you don't need a policy.
Right.
You have to comply to the governor's order. So I don't think we need any type of motion or anything. We have to comply to the governor's order.
But we have a policy before us. We have to do something with the policy.
And you have a policy before us. So, yeah, but I mean, it doesn't matter what we say in the motion. We still have to comply with the governor.
Enrique?
Yeah. Yeah, just the overall guidance is we can be more restrictive, we just can't be less restrictive than Executive Order 20-81.
Right.
Does anyone else want a second, the motion?
Second.
But we're talking about revisiting the policy then, correct?
For further review.
Have a second?
We have a second. Any other discussion?
We're tabling for further review, is that basically the?
I don't think table is the right word.
We're, what are we doing?
We're going to further review it, and we're bringing it back.
Do we even need it?
You're suspending, definitely. That means you're coming back to it.
I think this does fit under the postponement.
Right.
We talked about it a couple of meetings ago because we are looking for additional information and clarification.
Right.
To be able to reach a decision. So I think it does kind of fit that heading under Robert's rules of a postponement or table or the language we want to use.